Good morning. Good morning, everyone. The first week of May. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. And at this point in time, we have eight of our nine committee members here. I believe regional councilor, the problem may be come on screen later, because we don't hear that he's any regrets. So, as I mentioned, first month, first day, first meeting of the month of May. And this weekend, Saturday, is the coronation of the His Majesty, King Charles III. So certainly wishing all the best, I believe, candidate will represent there. And I will also mention, it was also mentioned me by the local MPP that Queen's Park actually be holding a celebration for those of people who would like to take, maybe not the subway here yet, but would like to travel Queen's Park to celebrate. That's this Saturday, May 6. And also, this week is also mental health week. More than ever, I think we all need to pay attention to hear people's story and social support for mental health. And it's also youth week. And I think it's some of the energy we can certainly hopefully to get from our youth. But again, today's meeting, it looks like we have presentation as well as a number of discussion. As you know, Richmond Hill is a truly inclusive and diverse community. So this month of May, in no alphabetical order, we are also celebrating a Manian Heritage Month, Asian Heritage Month, Jewish Heritage Month, as well Dutch Heritage Month, and South Asian Heritage Month. So with all that, I'd like now to Mr. Kirk to show that we have the full attendance of the committee. So the next item I have after calling to order, is there any council announcement? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just, I would like to acknowledge one other thing that's happening in, I guess, nationally. This is the 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And it was initiated in 1969. And this week is a time of celebration and reflection for all of us, especially here on Council of the importance of the clerk's office. So I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the work of our city clerk, our deputy city clerk, all of our council committee coordinators and all those who work in the clerk's office for their professionalism and support of council and the community. You know, I must admit, when I first became a councillor, I wasn't quite sure exactly what the clerk did. I certainly do now. And I suspect if that was the case for me, there may be a lot of people in our community that don't understand all the moving parts that take to run a city like Richmond Hill. But I really, I know we've all that have been on council for any length of time have really come to count on the expertise and the unbelievable knowledge of detail that the clerk's office, and particularly this clerk's office, provides. So Stephen, thank you on behalf of council and to the rest of your staff. Now, one final thing. So I was one year old when the Toronto Maple Leafs won the Stanley Cup. And you know, I've been through the Harold Ballard years and I've been through the Roger Nielsen years and I've been through period power or pyramid power. And I've been through, you know, all those other phases that we've gone through. And I have hurt myself mentally jumping on and off the bandwagon many times. And I wrote these comments before last night and I'm, I was ready to commit to jumping on the bandwagon. And I, but I still want everybody to know that I will be on the bandwagon now for the Toronto Maple Leafs and I wish them all the best. Yeah. It would be a long overdue and very much celebrated thing to have the Leafs win the cup. And it's been an entertaining season so far. So I think it's a good, a good cause to get behind right now. And I just want you to know that I am there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we are all in, with the Maple Leaf in spirit of the game too tonight. So any other councillors' announcement? Seeing none, I'd like to move to the next item or the agenda. Any, any item of our introduction for any emergency or time sensitive matters? Seeing none, could I have a member of the committee to move for adoption or agenda that we have in front of us? Councilors, citizens, thank you for the motion. Any discussion, all those who are in favour? Carry unanimously. Thank you. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest and genuine nature thereof? Seeing none? Good. And I'd like to ask any committee members, if anyone would like to identify any item they would like to pull requiring separate discussion? Yes, Commissioner Davidson?
I'd like to talk about 11.5, please.
11.5 is on Indigenous Action Committee One Year Padded Project. Got it. Any other committee members, like to put any other item? Seeing none? I, in that situation that, moving on, I'd like to have another committee member then move to adopt the remainder of the agenda items. Yes, thank you, regional councilor DePaula. Any discussion, all those in favour? Again, carry unanimously. So moving on, we don't have any public hearings today. But it's certainly welcoming people here in the chamber and everyone who is actually virtually, joining us virtually. So moving to item 9.1. It's a presentation by Anthony Arrow, Director of Economic Development in Richmond Hill Centre. And also our consultant, Urban Strategies with Lee McGrath regarding Richmond Hill Centre's secondary plan, which is the item 11.8. So I see already Anthony is already, our director is online. So Director Arrow, I would pass the time to you. And this is a 25 minute presentation. Thank you. Director, please.
Good morning, Mayor Weston, members of council. I apologize for not being able to be with you in person today. I'm a bit under the weather, but I'm still pleased to provide opening remarks for the Richmond Hill Centre Secondary Plan. In 2019, Richmond Hill Council initiated the Richmond Hill Centre Secondary Plan to respond to a provincial commitment to move forward with the Young North Subway Extension. Since 2019, the city has advanced an extensive public and stakeholder engagement process that has included three public open house meetings, four council education meetings, a statutory council public meeting, and a public information session engaging literally hundreds of residents and stakeholders. Through this process, almost 1,000 stakeholders requested and were provided notification of council's consideration of the Richmond Hill Centre Secondary Plan today. As a project team, we are encouraged by this level of community engagement and look forward to continuing to work with the community to guide development in Richmond Hill Centre over time. The draft Richmond Hill Centre Secondary Plan is intended to support the community and council's vision for Richmond Hill Centre while achieving the necessary conformity to provincial policies such as the High Tech TOC EMZO. Through collaboration and partnerships, the city has developed a secondary plan that encourages the creation of a transit supportive mixed use community that leverages announced investments in key transit infrastructure, including the Young North Subway Extension. I am pleased to now turn it over to Lee McGrath, our lead consultant in principle with Urban Strategies, who will provide an overview of the Richmond Hill Centre Secondary Plan, including the key areas of policy for council's consideration. Lee?
Thanks, Anthony. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. My name is Lee McGrath, as Anthony had said, partner and planner with Urban Strategies. And I'm very pleased to be here after a number of years of working with your community and your staff on the Richmond Hill Secondary Plan. I think as all of us know, Richmond Hill Centre is a key component of the city's urban structure. Next slide, please. It's a significant and prominent regional focal point for transit infrastructure investment. And notwithstanding, or not only the Young North Subway investment that's coming here, but we shouldn't forget the other transit that's also in this area. So the Viva BRT, local bus, Go Transit, all converging in this very important place that will be a key part of the city's growth over the long term. So to shape that growth, the development of the secondary plan, as Anthony mentioned, is a necessary step. And this is a detailed planning framework that implements the vision and creates expectations for development and advances very important public realm and public objectives, reinforcing that vision for the centre as being a place for major economic growth and intensification over the long term. Next, please. The majority of my remarks today will overview a little bit more detail of the process that's taken us here, as well as the key elements of the, of the plan itself and highlighting some elements where there have been finalization refinements since the last time we brought forward a draft secondary plan, which was in the fall of 2021. And we'll also cover the next steps from here. Next, please. As Anthony mentioned, we started this process a number of years ago, back in 2019. And the process has taken this amount of time because we've been very responsive to different changes, particularly at the provincial level, to the alignment of transit. When we began, transit line was in board away from the rail corridor. The process paused in 2020 while that was reconsidered and the alignment of the subway was shifted into the rail corridor itself. And then the process picked back up in 2021, which resulted in that draft secondary plan that was brought back to council in October of 2021. And then since then, again, more provincial changes, the EMZO, the TOC process, a number of different policy changes at the provincial level, which required some finalization and consideration of the draft policies that had previously been brought forward, which is where we are today with, with that updated finalization of, of the draft policies. Next, please. A little bit more detail about that finalization process and the importance of the inputs that we've taken on board as part of this process. And those are listed here, which include council and public feedback from that meeting we had in October of 2021, the outcomes of the high tech EMZO, as well as the provincial policy changes to Bill 109 and Bill 23, which impacts the kind of technical aspects of how the policy is needed to be framed and articulated to ensure conformity with the various different elements of provincial legislation. And there's also been a number of regional and municipal policy updates. Importantly, the York Region Official Plan. And those have a trickle down effect into the, into the policies itself. So we needed to have a really close view and a fine tooth comb going through the policy framework to ensure that there was conformity with the, with the inputs that, that happened after the October 21 draft. Next, please. So with that background in place, I'll walk you through the main components of the plan. And the structure of the plan really has not changed since we brought this forward in 2021. The policies are structured around a number of different chapters that take us from the big vision and the opportunity here, which is just such a very important place for, for future intensification and the realization of a downtown for Richmond Hill. And then articulates that through all of the various different planning policies that are necessary to realize that type of community, land uses, transportation, parks, open space, community services, et cetera. Next, please. The vision and the development principles have not been changed through the finalization process. The vision for these lands is something that we created with the community at the outset of the process in 2019. And this reinforces this notion of Richmond Hill Centre being at the centre of a number of important regional centres. The centre here is really distinguished by its not only north-south connections to downtown Toronto, but really importantly, for the long term, those connections east-west to other emerging centres like Markham Centre and the VMC, really putting you at the centre of these access of really important regional connections and an opportunity to really be at the centre of future growth and change without, within the greater Golden Horseshoe as a whole. And the development principles continue to guide how the policies have come together and really reinforcing those public objectives that we'd like to see realized here over the long term. Next, please. A major area of policy within the draft plan is around land use and character areas. There are eight character areas within the centre. And the centre of those is the transit cores. So really highly important place within the centre, the inner and outer transit cores, where this is the location for the tallest and most dense development within the centre, located directly adjacent to the High Tech Station. Young Street, of course, retaining its special identity is an important regional corridor. And some refinements that have taken place since the 2021 draft include some refinements to the boundary adjustments to better align with the direction of the EMZO. Next, please. Around the transit cores, we have a series of neighbourhoods. And the character of each one of these is articulated within the draft policies. They direct for a range of different uses, really providing a strong emphasis and in some cases requirements for additional employment uses and non-residential uses, as that's a very important objective for the centre is to create opportunities for, for jobs and places for people to live. And the secondary plan has policies specific to each one of these neighbourhoods. Because as we know, not every, even on either side of Young Street, it's going to be different. And there's a different character and context that the policies need to respond to. So there's policies that describe the ex-development expectations for each one of these neighbourhoods within, within the plan. And again, minor boundary adjustments were made, particularly in the Bantry area, to align with the development expectations as a result of the EMZO. Next, please. And then finally, the two character areas at the south of the centre, the utility corridor area and the bridge station area. So while no residential development is expected in these areas, the plan does put forward expectations for what is to be seen here over the long term, including for bridge station, developing a strong sense of identity and arrival there, and as well as the utility corridor lands, providing some direction for how those lands can be utilized for recreation and open space in addition to the important energy function that they have today with the hydro corridor. Next, please. There's no question that the Richmond Hill Centre is a place that's expected to accommodate significant amount of growth and density. So the height and density within the plan is articulated in a series of policies. Each of the character areas has a permitted density range, which is expressed as a minimum and maximum FSI. And I wanted to emphasize that that's on a character area basis as a whole. And this is articulated in the policies of the plan. And this is intended to create some flexibility within the character area as a whole, that some sites may be lower, some sites may be higher. But on a whole of the character area basis, the expectation for that density is expressed within the policies of the plan. Inclusive of the EMZO development permissions, there have been changes in, in terms of the expected yield of the Richmond Hill Centre, up to approximately 51,000 people and a minimum of approximately 10,000 jobs at full build out. And combined, that's just over 1,000 people and jobs per hectare. Next, please. A little bit more detail on this element. So overall, the densities, aside from the EMZO lands, are consistent with what was proposed in the 2021 plan. We have reflected the EMZO development permissions. It is a requirement that the secondary plan does not conflict with the permissions of the EMZO. So we needed to acknowledge and recognize that legislative tool within the secondary plan, which is how it's articulated in our schedules. And also there is a slight increase in the maximum FSI of the west of Young character area from 2.5 in the 21, 2021 plan to 3.0 in the plan we see today. And this is as a result of changes to the, the boundary of the character area as a whole. We made some adjustments to exclude a piece of land that already has development permissions through a different process. So as the land area gets smaller, the FSI has a minor increase, but the overall density expectations are the same. Next, please. One of the things that continues to be very important for Richmond Hill Centre and has been refined through this draft is transition and performance standards. The centre itself is uniquely situated within a context of existing communities. And there's policies in the plan that protect for appropriate built form transition through a range of tools, including an updated angular plane policy. There was some commentary that we got through the last draft that the angular plane approach wasn't as easily as understood as we had wanted it to be. So we refined that, that approach using the citywide standard of the existing official plan policy application of the angular plane, except for special to Richmond Hill Centre. And in acknowledgement of the fact that increases in intensity are appropriate here because of its role in the regional intensification hierarchy, there's special consideration here for flexibility in the angular plane. So there's particular performance standards where minor projections into that plane would be permitted in consultation with staff and through a development application. Next, please. There continues to be the same policy framework that we've had in place since 2021 related to the LMR Circle lands. This is an existing part of the residential community on the west side of Young. There's no development permissions conferred to these lands through this plan. Rather, it is a process that is in the policies of the plan that provides an expectation for if change were to happen, how would it take place? And what the policies are intended to do is to make sure that it's not a, a stop and start or confusing kind of process if, if these lands were ever to be developed. What it states is that they only can be developed into a larger parcel if all of the properties are sold and assembled to be redeveloped in the future. Next, please. One of the other modifications that we've made is related to gateway policies. This was part of a conversation that we had last time we were here in 2021, is an acknowledgement of the importance of the entryway here to, to the centre at the bottom end of Young Street. And the updated gateway policies add additional policy direction that these gateway sites should demonstrate distinct built form and strengthen the identity and sense of place within the centre and really emphasize the need for a high quality public realm on both sides of Young Street. There was some concern that there would be kind of a lopsided impact. And it's through this policy direction that we're trying to mitigate that concern, creating a coordinated and coherent public realm on both sides of Young at the gateway sites. Next, please. One of the very critical and important pieces of the centre is how people move around. Transit here, of course, is primary driver around why secondary plan is necessary. But not just getting the subways here, but getting people around to and from the centre is critically important. So the street network seeks to provide a fine grained grid of streets which can support walking, cycling and transit use. The street network has been adjusted slightly because of the result of some changes to the streets within the EMZO. There was general alignment amongst the street network between the 2021 plan and the EMZO, but again, minor adjustments in order to reflect consistency. And the plan does include a new protection for potential multimodal connection over the rail corridor, just shown in the thicker blue arrow on the screen. Should there be additional mobility needs for the community over time? We've preserved the opportunity to study that in the future. Next, please. In addition to the street network is a very robust active transportation network. And this again is critically important for moving the amount of people and jobs that are intended for the centre around. This, in addition to the fine grained streets, on top of that, there's pedestrian and cycling spines throughout the centre, which are highlighted in green, both north-south and east-west, to increase opportunities for safe pedestrian and cycling movement around the centre. And this network again has been adjusted slightly in terms of the street locations to align with the directions of the EMZO. Next, please. Layered on top of that urban structure of the streets and active transportation network is a series of other supportive policies that all speak to the objective of moving people successfully within the centre. That goes to the idea of mid-block connections, which are part of creating good sized urban blocks that create additional pedestrian porosity. Also, a series of transportation demand management measures, lengthy opportunities to monitor and control and, and, and shift people's modes from single automobiles into other ways of movement. And of course, parking policies to, to, to address how parking will be dealt in the centre. Next, please. Parks and open spaces are critical for a successful, complete community. And it's been an emphasis of this process since the early days to create a really rich public realm, a highly amenitized area that will attract jobs and investment, as well as create places for people that are living in the centre to, to enjoy one another's company. So within the plan, there is a series of neighbourhood and linear parks, which are found in each of the character areas. And also a series of urban squares, which are more urban in nature plaza type of open spaces, which are anticipated to be framed by active development, creating that more of a downtown feel. Some modifications were made in the location of these to align with, with the EMZO as well. Next, please. In addition to the neighbourhood and linear parks and urban squares, there's also the major urban open space being the existing stormwater management pond. There is an opportunity here to enhance that land, increase its ecological function and access to provide additional opportunities for exposure to, to nature. And also the woodland, which is an existing natural heritage feature within the parent official plan. No development is anticipated for the woodland, rather similar to the approach with Eleanor Circle. What's in place here is a policy framework. Should any change ever be suggested for the woodlands? There's a process in place for how to evaluate that change at that time. Next, please. Community services and facilities are of course a really key part of a complete community. The plan includes direction for a number of school areas. There's two school areas, not to put a limitation on the number of schools that may actually be realized over time. That would be done in consultation with the school boards. But rather what the plan has done is identified those geographic areas where, where a school site could most, most make sense. But the number, of course, and the, the exact kind of extent of those sites would be determined in consultation with the school boards and development over time as a centre grows. And of course, development charges and community benefit charges will be drawn from development in order to support the construction of community services and facilities within the centre, which of course create and contribute to that complete community identity. Next, please. The plan also reinforces some really key and important housing policy directions. As a place of intensification and growth, we don't want to forget the, the need and the interest to create a diversity of housing typologies and sizes and mixes in order to create a really complete and supportive community for the city as it grows over the long term. So that includes encouraging a range of unit sizes, including larger units, as well as reinforcing the region's direction for 35% of new housing to be affordable. This is also a, a direction that's reinforced in other secondary plans in the city. So we've taken the same approach. I want to note that the, the affordable housing direction, however, doesn't apply to the EMZO lands. That will, the housing mix there will be determined through a separate process. Next, please. There's also policies within the plan to advance environmental objectives, particularly through servicing stormwater directions. There's a great opportunity here to really think about environmental sustainability through increased urban development. And those directions are within the policies of the plan, including things like low impact development measures for stormwater management. And also emphasizing a desire to explore a district energy system. So our neighbours to the south in Markham have infrastructure for this type of shared energy system. And Richmond Hill Centre is a great opportunity to explore that further, which is also included in, in the plan's policies. And next, please. So to wrap up, the secondary plan will be forwarded to council on May 10 for adoption. Following that, going to the region for approval. And then following that, staff will be evaluating the need for additional work to support the implementation for, for the centre and would report back to council at a later date as part of a subsequent budgeting process. So that, that concludes my remarks. So Anthony and I would be happy to take questions.
Thank you very much for both, Director Arrow. I'm sure you have a whole team working in your office, as well as Mr. Wreck and your consultant firm and your team. So at this point in time, I would like to bring it to the committee. Anyone have any questions or comments? And in the end, with a motion to receive the presentation. I see Mayor West and then Councilor Chu and then Councilor Civiles. Mayor West?
Okay, thank you. So I'm just gonna ask some questions. I'll reserve my comments till later. But can, can we put up the slide that showed the boundaries for the EMZO area? Again, it was toward the beginning of your presentation.
It's on slide six.
It gives maybe the second or third slide? That's the one. Okay, so so in the, can you just clarify for me? And I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure. The EMZO itself and the boundaries for the EMZO do not include the hydro corridor lands. Is that correct?
That's to the extent that they're included within the black dotted line. But the majority of the hydro lands within the secondary plan centre are not within the EMZO.
Yep. And the, and the storm pond is obviously not included in that land. And, but the Langstaff Community Centre is within the red boundary, but it is not in the EMZO. And the two school, like the two schools and the Langstaff Community Centre are included in that.
The school zones are within the secondary plan boundary.
Right, but not within the EMZO lands?
One of, one of the schools, the northerly school site that's in the Bantry neighbourhood is within the EMZO.
Okay.
Yeah, and there, we've, we've aligned our approach with the indications from the TOC study that there is also an expectation for a school location there. So that we're consistent with their directions.
Okay. And so, and then, so the remainder of the lands are, a good part of it is the west of Young Street area, where we don't really want a large where we don't really want large development, because as one of your slides indicated, it's a transition to the neighborhood. And the good part of the remaining lands are actually relatively newly built high-rise buildings that are probably not going anywhere anytime in the next numerous decades from now. So really, the secondary plan part that is not in the EMZO, there really isn't a ton of really unspoken for, I mean, there's some, but there's not a ton of unspoken for realistically going to redevelop in the near future land.
I think what you've identified is a good observation. And the west of Young is one area where there is opportunities for redevelopment. And as you've noted, the Red Maple area, nearly fully built out. And then the far east portion of the secondary plan lands are further along, high-tech, are also not within the EMZO. So yeah, there is, there is, there is, I don't want to say limited, but you know, it's not, it's not a blank slate within the center.
Even the, even the west of Young Street lands, I mean, the Vishnu Mandir is included in that. And it's not going anywhere anytime soon too, right? Like, I mean, the Vishnu Mandir lands are in that? I think they are.
Yes, they are. Yeah.
All right. Okay, just the other question, I guess, is, so I'm assuming that, well, I know that Mercombe is going through the exact same thing that we are with a slightly different plan, but they're certainly connected. Is there any indication as an update on where they're at with their, with any secondary plan-type discussions? I mean, I'm not sure if anybody knows the answer to that, but I'd be interested. It's obviously very important for us to coordinate, because I mean, I know there's a municipal boundary in between, but nobody's gonna need a passport when they cross into Richmond Hill or into Mercombe, right? So.
Yeah. Anthony, I'd ask you if you have more information on Mercombe?
Yeah, Director Iru. Happy to jump in through you, Mr. Chair. So Mercombe did advance a secondary plan for the Langstaff Gateway community several years back. And that, that plan is now being considered by Mercombe for updates. So they are behind us in a process, but looking to advance a similar process at Langstaff Gateway. And, and part of that is, you know, sort of responding to the EMZO as well. So there, there is a parallel process that's happening in Mercombe. They've been engaged with us in the development of the Richmond Hill Center secondary plan, clearly because there needs to be coordination. And we will be engaged with them as well as they advance updates to their secondary plan. But they're, they're, they're behind us in the process and we're clearly, I mean, I guess, you know, they, they have a secondary plan, so in some, in some ways, they're ahead of us, but you know, it's out of date, and so it needs to be updated. So in terms of having an updated plan, we're further along in that process.
Okay. I mean, I know when, at the, at the beginning of my term on, as mayor, you know, we, this is one of the first things to hit the shore. And I know, you know, Anthony and the people in Mercombe and so on, I mean, we all looked at this very carefully. And, and you know, once the EMZO hit, I've been maybe a little less up to date on this. But I know at the time, and I'm confident that we're still making sure that all of the coordination is happening between the two sites. And I think some of that is built into the EMZOs in both of our communities. But I know, can you just confirm for me that, that we're doing the best that we can to make sure that the two plans are well-coordinated?
Through you, Mr. Chair, absolutely. I mean, we have regular touchpoints with, with Mercombe around our collective response to the province, around the EMZOs specifically. And from a planning perspective, you know, our secondary plan process and Mercombe's secondary plan process as it relates to the Langstaff Gateway sites would also ensure that there's coordination. And so the dialogue and coordination is actually happening at various levels through various processes. So I think we can, we can confidently say we're pretty well coordinated with our, with our partners in Mercombe.
Okay, thank you. Last question then, the rest of what I have to say is comments, so I'll save that. But can you just explain to me again the provisions that we've put in place around the west side of Young Street, a part of the equation? And, and also included in that, I'd like to just confirm that I understand the provisions that are put around to protect the Eleanor Circle part of the equation.
Oh, so Lee.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Director?
Oh. So, I mean, I could start and then maybe turn it over to Lee, because Lee's definitely more versed in the detail. But through you, Mr. Chair. So there are provisions around Angular Plain that are intended to protect the existing stable neighborhoods from development in the west of Young character area. And what we've done with respect to providing flexibility around those provisions is to create a performance-based approach where developers operating within the parameters of the FSI requirements of the plan can demonstrate that they're not creating any adverse impacts to that existing stable neighborhood and, and, you know, move forward with minor projections into the Angular Plain, potentially. And then we also have, as it relates to Eleanor Circle, we have a policy that requires the consolidation of all of the potential development blocks in the Eleanor Circle area, and that's about 18 properties. And essentially requires that they are all consolidated prior to development moving forward. Now, if those properties are ever consolidated, because it's not guaranteed that they will be, you know, a lot of that depends on whether the 18 property owners have an interest in selling their property for consolidation. But if that were to be the case, then the standard transition policies in the plan would apply to protect the properties further west, who would now be adjacent to that development block. So that's sort of a high-level summary, but Lee, I'm happy to sort of turn it over to you if you want to, you know, animate anything.
Thank you, Director Iru. Is there anything to add from you, Ms. McGrath?
Uh, no.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor?
All right, thanks so much. That's, that's good to know. I just, I appreciate the confirmation on all that.
Thank you. Now, moving on to next speaker, Councilor Shu. I just want to emphasize again, at this point in time, the item 11.8 is not at a committee. We are talking about questions and comments as we enter the presentation. Thank you. Councilor Shu.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks for the presentation. I have only one question. As I know, we've got a letter of objection from a law firm concerning and complain about the FSI, the density, and the affordable housing issue. So I have no idea if there's any impact on the process and timeline for this project, or do we have to put it on hold? Something like that.
Uh, through you.
Yes, Ms. Wreck.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Any number of members of the public can provide commentary for an item like this at council. So they're providing their commentary with their concerns about the center, which we'd be happy to, you know, discuss if that's of interest to you. But the process does not need to be put on hold because of those commentaries. This is just, it's part of how the public's opinion is expressed, whether it be through a lawyer or an individual landowner or whatnot. This is the opportunity for them to express, express their views.
Thank you for your response. Councilor?
This is Alaba. Thank you.
Thank you. So next on my speaker's list is Councilor Siviris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Ms. McGrath, for another fine presentation. And to Anthony and all the staff who have worked on this. I just have one question. To you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. McGrath, or, or Mr. Iruolo. Is any part of the Mercombe side of this under an EMZO? Is it only us?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, there is, there is an EMZO that was advanced in parallel to the EMZO for the High-Tech TOC for the, in the Langstaff Gateway community adjacent to Bridge Station. And in terms of the scale, very, very similar scale and size to what, to what was proposed in Richmond Hill.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much. And next, I have Councilor Davison. Councilor Davison, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I thought we had an original briefing that said there was something about development charges not being charged. Can you, can you clarify that any development here will still have development charges, which pay for the sewers and all the infrastructures that? I think I misunderstood about what development charges are being waived for some of these projects.
Maybe Director can help out?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. There is, there are no, there are no specific exemptions to development charges in Richmond Hill Center. So the approach towards development charges in Richmond Hill Center is consistent with the approach around development charges or community benefits charges or any other charge that the city applies to any other part of the city. And so, you know, you may be referring to some of the development charge exemptions that have been advanced by the province under Bill 23 related to affordable housing. And, you know, I think that's a broader challenge that affects the city as a whole and not Richmond Hill specifically, or Richmond Hill Center specifically. One area of note in the EMZO area is that the province has essentially exempted that area from any affordable housing requirements. So, you know, that may suggest that there's not an intent to advance affordable housing in that area. We're hoping that that is not the case and that the province will work with the building partners and the municipalities to achieve affordable housing. Significant portion of affordable housing, but from a development charge perspective, there's really nothing that's, that's different in Richmond Hill Center than any other, other place in the city.
Thank you, Director. Councilor Davison?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. There was at one point, I thought, a limit on how many jobs could be in the, in the High-Tech EMZO. Has that been removed?
Through you, Mr. Chair. What the EMZO enables is a minimum number of jobs. So it's actually not a limit. It's, it's just the floor. So that's what's articulated in the EMZO. That's reflected in our overall people and job numbers. But there are opportunities, and through the policies of the secondary plan, we continue to encourage additional jobs to that. But no, there's no limit on the number of jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you. And my last question, are we already in the process of making this happen? There already, or is it shovels in the ground in the future? Or is this high-density area already, we've received city application, we've received applications from developers? Is this already in motion?
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, as Mr. Mayor had already pointed out, two west portions of the center are almost complete. In the Red Maple area, there's a number of tall buildings and redevelopment there. There's a number of applications along the west of Young that are active. But with regards to the lands within the EMZO, that process has not yet started. And it's on its own track related to the transit delivery. But there is definitely development interest in such an important area such as this.
Thank you. Director, you have anything to add?
No, I think, through you, Mr. Chair, I think Lee covered it well.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Making sure that all angles are covered. Next, I'm moving on to Councilor New, and then the next one is Regional Councilor DePaul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you very much for the presentation, and I think we are all very excited about this project. And, and I would say that this is, I think, the biggest project in Richmond Hill history. So I think we are all very excited, looking forward to it. I know it's gonna take a long time to, to come into fruition. And I really like the idea of the interconnection, you know, between the building. This is, that's what a walkable community is about, and it's gonna be very vibrant. I think I asked that before. Has there been any contemplation about, you know, underground, like the path network in Toronto, you know, with the weather that we have? I think in order to promote that walkable community, underground might be a very critical component. So I just want to.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. In the early days of the, of the process, we did have conversations about the path, or path-like system. What's happened through the process and interesting shift is, you know, the EMZO is governing the lands that are most directly related to transit. So I, and I can't speak if the, the bylaw that enables the development within the EMZO doesn't speak particularly to an underground path system. However, Anthony, I would welcome you to provide any additional commentary if you're knowledgeable about other ideas within the TOC documentation that might encourage such a, such a network.
So Director Iruolo, to an extent, you can share with us.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I think, you know, we've heard from the developers and the province that there's an interest in connecting development directly to the subway. You know, how that gets articulated is, I think, still early in the process. And we haven't, you know, seen any detailed design associated with how that could be achieved. But what we do know is that there's an interest both provincially and with the development partners leading the, or who own property within the EMZO area, that there is an interest in creating direct connections between the development that's being proposed in the EMZO area and the subway. And that could, that could may well be connected through a path-type system. We're just too early in the process to really know whether that will be the case or not.
Thank you, Director. Councilor New? Oh, thank you. So next speaker is Regional Councilor DePaula. Councilor DePaula?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Yeah, very exciting project. I just, a couple of questions. The EMZO did not include, it notched out around the property that the city owns at, at the corner of Young and High-Tech Road in the southeast corner there. Does our secondary plan provide for, you know, similar heights and density of the lands immediately abutting? Should, should this council make a decision regarding those lands?
Through you.
Ms. McGrath.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Those lands are the existing woodlot, which is a natural heritage feature within the existing official plan today. And so what the policies of the plan do is set forward a decision-making kind of framework for how consideration of change for those lands would be, would be processed through the city. So an assessment, natural heritage assessment would be required in order to identify and confirm, you know, the nature of the woodlot and the wetland that's in that location today. So there's a bit of a process that would need to be required, should there be change in the future. And that's the, that's how the policies of the plan set that forward. And, and then through that process, then it would be determined if it's developable at all, and then how to take that forward.
Thank you. Councilor?
I didn't, but aware that that was the current designation. I was under the understanding that the EMZO was gonna make the change that the secondary plan would, would give the city of Richmond Hill the option to, to have the same, same density and thus the same value on that land as everything surrounding it. Okay, thank you for that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just jump in here. I think what the secondary plan attempts to do is apply a process for the potential evaluation of that property. But at this point, the property is a key natural heritage feature. And, and whether it's appropriate for development is still a bit of an unknown. And so there needs to be a process applied to determine whether that a natural heritage feature can be even considered in that way before we can begin to consider potential development permissions on, on the property. And so what the secondary plan does, and this is consistent with what we proposed in 2021, is identifying a process for that evaluation to occur, should council want to pursue that. And if that evaluation determined that the lands were developable, then council could consider an amendment to its plan to introduce development permissions.
Okay, so because of natural heritage features on the property, we, we don't have the authority to zone that, that, that has to have this special exemption within the secondary plan? We, what, what would, what was prevent us from zoning today as we, as we pass the secondary plan?
Director?
Yes. Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. There would be policies in place that would require the evaluation of key natural heritage, identify key natural heritage features to determine whether they are key natural heritage features prior to the redevelopment of those features. And that would be no different than working with a private developer and preserving key natural heritage features as part of a development application proposal. I don't know, Lee, if you have anything to add, but there, there, there is a process associated with developing lands that have been identified as key natural heritage. there is a process associated with developing lands that have been identified as key natural heritage be- fe- uh features and this is that process is consistent um on on municipal or uh private lands.
Thank you, Director. Thompson?
Right, so you know, regardless, every 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 application has to consider key, you know, has natural heritage features on its property uh. But I I I don't see why we couldn't have a zoning associated with with that property. And even even if there needs to be a conditions, there's some subject to uh subject to uh going through a process. I just understand, would it require an official plan amendment for for council to make a decision at some later date to to use that land for anything other than the this the stand of trees it is today?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it would require an amendment to the secondary plan in order to to uh to permit it as a development block.
Thank you.
Uh, I just thought it would be appropriate for us to have that discussion uh prior to us moving the secondary plan so that we would wouldn't have to go back and and change things in the future. That's that's okay. Thank you for your for your answers, uh. And that's all for my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Um, no issue here, and we got the responses. Uh, next on my speakers list is Counselor Tree and then Counselor Thompson. Counselor Tree, please.
Thank you so much, uh, Ms. Chair. Through you, Ms. Chair, uh, to our clock first. Do you mind? Can you please uh uh put this slide on the screen, the page, tell? Okay. My first question regarding the chart at the bottom, why you can see the uh the population here, right? So we expect the index whatever forty years. So we expect this downtown gonna be how our fifty-one thousand peoples. You look at our uh city's uh demographic projections, by twenty forty, gonna have our uh eighty thousand new populations here. If you calculate this one, that's why it's almost cock um cock a pi sixty-two point five percent of our population. Look at our city's project, we have this uh secondary plan. Also, we have the Oak Ridge. We have uh Easter Beer Creek, we have Young Street, we have Bernard, we have a lot of open project plus a lot of residential uh projects as well, a lot, right? So is that necessary just for this project, a project fifty, no, sixty-three percent of our population just in this area? This is my first question.
Mr. McGraw, you want to respond to that or Director, you will, you want to respond to that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so the question was, is it necessary to plan for this much intensification? And I think um, you know, what we've, what's what's expressed within the Richmond Hill Secondary Plan is a very long-term vision. So we're not just talking about twenty forty or twenty fifty, but thinking a very long-term build-out. Um, I was just reflecting with my colleague on the way up here about the number of decades of development that, you know, in our short lifetimes that we've seen um within the areas in which we live, and we're at the beginning of that process here in Richmond Hill Center. And it will be many decades to come through which this um development may be realized over time. So we're setting the framework for that possibility um for that development uh to take place over a very long-term build-out. And again, the part portion of the secondary plan lands is governed by the EMZO and that density has been established through a separate process. And then through the other lands around the center, um, uh, what we've put forward are policies that are um conform with the regions of official plan and the protected major transit station area and minimum densities. So there continues to be an expectation to realize complete communities and intensified communities, walkable intensified places to accommodate future growth um over the long term, and that's what the plan puts forward.
Thank you. Counselor Tree?
Thank you so much. My second question regarding to the uh reduction of jobs here, you can see the bleeding in the second one. So what is the uh uh the the requirement or changes asking for more residents and a few jobs? Is that decided by region, by province or by city itself?
So through you,
Yes.
Mr. Chair. Um, the uh the the shifts in the jobs um is very much related to the permissions that are conferred through the EMZO lands. Uh, so as we looked at the mapping earlier, there's a, you know, an area of land within the within the center that is that that's regulated through the EMZO. And that's what establishes the minimum amount of jobs for those lands, and that was through the EMZO process. Um, so it was provincial direction through the EMZO process that established that floor of at least ten thousand jobs. The policies within the secondary plan encourage and and enable uh additional non-residential development in other areas of the secondary plan to the extent that we're able. Um, because it is a very important um employment hub and has the potential to become a really important place for investment. So we've taken what's given to us in terms of what the EMZO establishes and added to that additional encouragement in other parts of the center for additional jobs.
So I think that's gonna be driven by the province and not the policy itself, right?
For the EMZO lands, that's correct.
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, I'd like to jump in here as well, because I think there's an
Yes, please.
An important piece of information that I think we need to highlight for council. So it is absolutely correct that the EMZO establishes minimum employment requirements and maximum uh population requirements. Uh, you know, we've been clear, uh, and when I say we, council and staff have been clear uh that our intent is to uh increase the minimum uh non-residential GFA and uh potentially decrease the uh population GFA. And um, I think it's important to recognize that the secondary plan as drafted includes policies for both the inner and outer transit core that um look uh to developers in this area to maximize opportunities to establish major office uses uh and encourage non-residential uses as uses as the prominent built form. Now, what that means essentially is, you know, under the EMZO, we're not permitted to require uh the developer to build above the minimum non-residential GFA. But the policies in our secondary plan provide us a policy basis to continue to have conversations um with both the province and the developers and over time uh do work around uh investment attraction uh and market feasibility to develop arguments around increasing that non-GFA or non-residential GFA. Um, so you know, the secondary plan, I think, um, provides the city with a policy basis to increase the non-residential GFA or the jobs in this area uh and layer on a a piece of policy on top of the the EMZO that hopefully gets uh the number of jobs in this area to increase. Um, so yes, you know, we have uh provincial policy that's given us a bit of direction here. And what we're trying to do is identify opportunities through policy or through future work to influence that to be more in line with with our vision for Richmond Hill Center, which is to have more jobs than the eight thousand proposed in the inner in or in the inner and outer transit corridor or in the inner inner and end inner or and outer transit core.
Thank you, Director. Counselor Tree?
Great. My next question regarding to the FSI here, you can see from the chart. So there are different SIA, I FISs. My question is, I look at all of our um uh official plan and there are many, many different uh FISs. What is the criteria to determine FSI?
Yes, Miss McGraw.
Sure. So the question was, what is, how do we determine the FSI's for the center? So the I think this has been part of our process all along is to understand, well, there's things that are that are information that we have to respond to. So there's minimum densities that are established by the region that we need to adhere to uh at a minimum. And there's also uh reaching other objectives for the types of communities that we want to um see realized that can achieve those objectives of creating, you know, the development principles that that we want to see here, well-connected place for many people to live, work and play, et cetera. And so through a series of, you know, urban design kind of testing processes, we take both the the minimum um density expectations, also apply other contextual um elements such as adjacent seats and neighborhoods and the influence of the angular plane, which then helps us inform, you know, what development would be appropriate. And then through that urban design testing, um, we're able to identify what the output in terms of a gross floor area would be and translates translating that into a floor space index, which is um a relational uh number to the 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 size of a site. So it's through that kind of iterative process of what is the policy telling us? What are the other objectives that we wanna, we want to achieve here? What is the actual developable land basis? If we have a smaller amount of land, if there's constrained lands, hydro corridors, rail corridors, um parks and open spaces, other things, what do we have to stay away from? Where does the domain actually go? How big should it be according to the policy directions that we have and what other contextual things we have to consider?
Thank you.
Okay, okay. My next question regarding to the FSI. If I'm the vendor or builders, uh, when I have a piece of land, I'm going to definitely trying to get the maximum uh FSI because this is really the benefits for the vendors, right? In this case, from a city perspective, how can we control everybody chasing the highest FSI here, just in case?
We would like to tackle this question. Yeah, Miss McGraw.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. So the plan has been developed in a way that um, you know, that the maximum outputs wouldn't be necessarily a negative. You know, this is, this is part of realizing the vision for the center overall. Um, but there are a number of different controls within the plan that further articulate, you know, this is not just a plan with density numbers in it. There's also lots of expectations for how that building performs. Where there's a podium, how it transitions into a neighborhood, uh where a tower is placed, how small is that tower? You know, and every site will be different. Every site will have its own unique characteristics and ways that it has to respond to its existing context. So even if on the the corridor of Young Street, for example, some of those properties are narrow and because of the constraint of the size of the site, you're only gonna be able to achieve a certain amount of development. When you factor in um how, you know, how big the podium needs to be and where the angular plane might fall, that's gonna naturally control the amount of intensification that you'd be able to propose. So there's some diversity um about how that comes forward. Some sites will be able to achieve the maximum and some may not be able to just by the nature of their site condition.
Thank you so much. I do have following two questions. First one is timeline. So when we finish this meeting, when we going to uh maybe open? I I know yesterday we have discussion about open house around the June seven. Is this report gonna be part of that open house sessions?
Um, I I think Director would answer that, right, with the uh?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we're um, we're at the, so where we are in the process, I mean, we've had nine uh engagements with with the community since tw- twenty, since twenty nineteen. Uh, and uh, and we've had our council public meeting, statutory council public meeting in October twenty twenty-one. We also had a community information session on February ninth. Uh, so we've, we've had a lot of touchpoints with the community. Um, and so where where we are in the process is we're seeking council direction on the secondary plan. And so um, you know, ultimately how we move forward will be in council's hands, but we're recommending that the council, that the secondary plan be brought forward to the May tenth uh council meeting for adoption.
Thank you.
Uh, let's echo what I said yesterday during our uh official plan meeting. I strongly, strongly suggest June seven is only two hours open house covering entire city's project, gonna be too short. My personal suggestions, let's have another open house because this project, especially for the second plan, is fifty years project, right? Why won't I have another open house session between May and June to have more people join this one? Open house, free talking, everyone contribute. Remember, this is really a fifty years project. Why we need a wash rush? So my my personal suggestion is strongly, I have another open house session. Instead, only two hours, two hours cannot holding entire city's plan. This is only one with them. There are another three or four big project in the pipeline. So my personally strong suggest, have another open house, let everyone join, just in case. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and suggestion. I'm sure the staff will take that into advisement. Um, moving on, thank you, Counselor, for your comments and suggestion. Uh, next on the list is Counselor Thompson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Um, through the chair, I I would like to uh thank uh everyone to uh put this uh presentation together. It's been very helpful. I also like to thank all my colleagues for their their questions. They've pretty much eliminated uh all the things that I wanted to ask. Um, and and even uh, Mr. Arulo, you uh you know, uh touched on the affordable housing, which was something that uh I was going to ask as well, so I thank you for killing that question too. Um, what I, what I do have to ask is in regard, and it's kind of follows up on what Counselor Tree was talking about with the uh jobs. You're talking about a minimum standard being set, and I think it was ten thousand jobs per fifty-one thousand people. Uh, and that uh, that's specific to the the TOC itself if I'm, or am I misunderstood on that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, the fifty-one thousands uh people and ten thousand jobs is for the entire second year, secondary plan area. The TOC itself um is more like thirty-four thousand people and eight thousand jobs. Now, the thirty-four thousand people is a maximum uh and the eight thousand jobs is a minimum. And what I was attempting to uh articulate in my previous remarks was that I think the city as a whole uh has an interest in encouraging the minimum uh uh jobs to increase. Uh, and so the policy framework of the secondary plan and and work that we do moving forward will be will be targeted at that.
Thank you, Director. Counselor?
Um, yeah, so now I'm trying to to run those numbers in my head. Because in the official plan update yesterday, uh, it seemed to be the standard we were looking at was uh three jobs per seven residents. And so um if we're, if we're held, i- if it's only the minimum that somebody decides to come up with, uh, what is that, what we'll be be looking at in a ratio there? And also what is our opportunities uh when somebody just comes with the the minimum? Do we even have an opportunity to uh uh say they need to to uh do better in that respect?
Director, you go?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, you know, the math, I think, you know, just looking at fifty-one thousand people, ten thousand jobs is roughly five to one. Um, you know, our secondary plan is that we brought forward in October twenty twenty-one had a ratio of, you know, plus or minus two to one. Um, so there's less jobs uh in proportion um than what we had originally envisioned. That shift is entirely due to the permissions under the EMZO, which we need to adhere to. Uh, we're not, we're not permitted to to introduce additional uh non-residential GFA above the minimum as a requirement. Uh, and so what we intend to do is to create a policy structure uh that includes uh expectations that opportunities for non-residential are maximized. Uh, and then we work to demonstrate that there's opportunities for greater non-residential GFA. Now, to your question, you know, what, you know, if somebody comes in with an application um that uh that in- includes um a mix that's consistent with the EMZO, uh, what are our options? I mean, the EMZO provides direction and so those those applications would conform with uh with zoning and would be allowed to move forward. Um, so you know, we think, you know, this is more of an exercise in in influence rather than providing requirements. Uh, and we're going to uh be working with our partners at the province and the landowners to to see if we can achieve a greater uh mix of uses um in in the secondary plan area.
I do appreciate the answer and I I hope we do find that type of appetite moving forward. Uh, those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Uh, I already have speakers who want to speak on round two. Uh, but we still at round one, so perhaps it's my opportunity to um one, comment, second, have specific questions. As a former local counselor for sixteen years, I would say I'm extremely excited. The word excited is said many times, I'm but extremely excited because this is really sets out the path to, as I said many times, downtown for twenty-first century Richmond Hill, which is now a city. Um, then uh particularly with the subway coming, which is making reference to in here. And in so far as the time period for public consultation, I would offer these insights. It's already stated in the report. I still have vivid memory before COVID, June twenty nineteen. The Land Staff Community Center is packed, is packed with very interested community members, not only in the ward six, but all for the town at the time. but all for the town at the time, or actually city already by June twenty nineteen. So there's been a lot of heightened interest, particularly with the onset back in April twenty nineteen, when the Premier of Ontario committed funding to have the finally the share for the parents to pay for the young subway extension. So I bet to differ in terms of insufficient consultation. This has been a plan, it takes years in making, at least four years or not before that. I agree, we can always have more time to engage community and I think the opportunity is still there. And actually, at least to my first question, so perhaps it's to Director Etrul. Notwithstanding that the timeframe that we're talking about, it might come back next week to council adoption. Would there still be opportunity for the public and any interested party continue to provide input? Or seek any kind of variation through, or myself, I guess, to your director?
Sure. So as I, through you, Mr. Chair, as I've, as I sort of tried to allude to in my opening remarks, I mean, the buildout of Richmond Hill Centre is a long-term process. It's likely going to be a fifty-year plan in terms of buildout. And so, you know, there is a need, an expectation, a need to have ongoing dialogue with the community around the buildout of Richmond Hill Centre. That relates not only to the secondary plan, but around some of the enabling policies that will be brought forward to support implementation of the secondary plan. The review and update of the secondary plan, which generally happens every five years. And the evaluation of development proposals as they come forward in the Richmond Hill Centre secondary plan area. So now this is going to be a, a process where the, where the community will have ongoing opportunities to provide inputs into the development of Richmond Hill Centre, really over the next fifty years.
Thank you. So along that path, Director, help me to understand, perhaps for, not just for myself, the significance of a secondary plan in the whole planning process is that really policy or guidance or as a framework for considering any proposed development that may be submitted, submitted under Planning Act?
Sure.
Where does it stand in the hierarchy of planning instruments?
Through you, Mr. Chair. A secondary plan would form official plan policy, so it essentially provides more specific policies for, for an area to provide the development framework, the planning policy framework for, for downstream approvals. And so it's, in terms of the hierarchy, it's the broadest and sort of highest level planning approval forms part of the official plan policies is, is ascend, is essentially intended to provide a vision and direction for the development of a, of an area.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if you have anything to add to that, but.
Thank you. And, and it does set our direction. And on that note, I make reference, this is the, not only new, but is going to be the fantastic, excellent kind of model for a particular cities downtown. And on that note, the term urban standards have been mentioned a couple of times in the presentation, whether school, whether something else. Could, maybe this is for Mr. McGrath. Could you elaborate a bit more? Give I for one, other people some kind of sense, what urban standards again are here? Because when you say school urban standard, I'm thinking about urban standard school in downtown Toronto waterfront is no longer playgrounds on the ground, it's playgrounds upstairs somewhere in the air. So help me understand.
Sure. Happy to answer. Yeah. So in terms of the school site in particular, you know, an urban standard is something that I think we're continuing to explore in growth areas like Richmond Hill, VMC, Oakville Midtown, downtown Toronto, we have a couple of examples now. But as growth and intensification, you know, utilizes our land to optimize adjacency to transit and whatnot, the amount of land available for less intense uses like a school needs to be rethought. You know, need to think differently about how do we incorporate a school into a mixed use building? Or how can more of a, a layered type of shared use agreement be structured that we're enabling both a school use or outdoor uses that's able to play or have a couple of different hats, so to speak? So the policies within the secondary plan encourage that kind of creative thinking. And it will require a consultation and discussions with the school board to realize these types of uses. But this is something that centers across the region are, are facing and coming up with really creative solutions. As you mentioned, the one downtown in the waterfront to create, you know, really exciting and new, different types of places for, for students to learn.
Thank you. And the last one I want to make is partly comment, partly question. As a Chair of the Cities Economic Development Committee, I have to say, and as a former councillor there, I'm very disappointed when the powers that put in the enhanced MZO actually reduce our first in proposed number of jobs estimate for that area. So I share the concern by many of my colleagues. And I think there's still opportunities, Director, saying, as I understand it, the city has not, at this point in time, signed on to the more than a year ago that AIP agreement principle. So I look forward to the opportunity that the city can further, perhaps negotiate and have our fair share of jobs to be included in the EMZ area, as well as the whole area. In particular, one of the attraction of having a subway is not only to have people in the north, so to speak, to go downtown Toronto, go to work. And I've always been saying that when the subway is here, actually the other direction, people go northbound to the jobs at Richmond Hill Centre, which is high tech, what is actually in, on the bridge in Mackambeau. So I look forward to it. Maybe it's not a question. I do understand, Director Etrul. You may or may not be answering the question on this particular point, but I want to emphasize, I for one, the comment is negotiate and really get as much as increase in the job numbers as we can, because that's slide number twelve. The only one going down in terms of numbers, one of my council tree and my colleague Anna Side Thompson is only going down. So those are my comments and questions. Thank you very much. Just in time for second round.
Mr. Chair, if I might, Mr. Chair, before you move to a second round, please.
Oh, it's no second round.
Well, I, 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 it would be my recommendation to council, simply because we do not have a motion on the floor that we're already stretching the
Thank you.
precedents of the procedure by law. And I would just comment that our precedence, although not spelled out in the procedure by law, especially where we have a staff presentation related to an actual agenda item, is that normally we, we set the tone about, you know, as you said at the beginning, that limiting our questions to the presentation, not about the secondary, to understand that better. So that debate on the actual secondary plan happens under the agenda item. So it's my cautionary tale that firstly, in the absence of a motion to even receive the presentation, we've gone a little too far. And then I would comment also that we do actually have item eleven point eight to come.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kirk. I did say in the beginning that looking for a motion to receive as well. Thank you for that reminder. So could I have a motion from a member, Councilor Civiles, to receive the presentation by both our Director Etrul and also by Ms. McGrath of the consulting company? All those in favor, because we have lots of discussion ready. Thank you very much. It's passed unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McGrath, and thank you, Director Ero. I'm sure you'll be back later on when we actually talk about item itself, eleven point eight. And appreciate the opportunity at this point in time, as suggested by Kirk. We can move any questions that, when the item is brought back. Now is the opportunity for moving to the delegation on the ten point one. We do have three individuals who would like to speak to the committee about this matter, eleven point eight. First person is Mr. David Crowley, and I believe he's out here. Right. Welcome. And thank you. I should note that Mr. Crowley also sent us something in advance in writing. You have five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Slide two, please. I've been following the history of the Richmond Hill Regional Centre for more than twenty years. And my understanding has always been that this was to be a transit-oriented employment and activity destination. The current plan, the way I interpret it anyway, is that they've given up that laudable goal in the interest of the certain landowners and who want to create another high-density suburban residential development. As it stands, it's equivalent to three St. Jamestown's. Unfortunately, it doesn't have the attributes of St. Jamestown that would allow it to function in transportation terms. Next slide, please. We've got thirty years of good data on travel habits, travel behavior in the GTA. And I summarize it here. There's two key factors in terms of determining people's probability of using transit. One is the destination, and the second is vehicle access. Can they, could they, could they have driven? It turns out that the only place in the region where people who could drive actually choose transit is to the five hundred thousand odd jobs in downtown Toronto. And this is where the modal splits are above fifty percent. The further you go out, the lower the transit modal splits. And so I like to put it this way. When I was working downtown office building, taking the go train, I was traveling the better way. Before that, when I was transit dependent, I was traveling the bitter way. Next slide. Couple of slides here that provides some background information that I can't discuss in detail, but ten percent of Richmond Hill residents in two thousand and sixteen commuted to downtown Toronto. And they accounted for half of all the transit users. Another six percent traveled in the young corridor, the area served by the young subway. And, and together they accounted for sixty percent of all the peak period transit ridership by Richmond Hill residents. However, the vast majority of Richmond Hill residents work in York region, dispersed locations in York region. And you can see that the transit modal splits to all those destinations are very low. Next slide, please. It's useful to take a little ride up Young Street. When you're in the downtown area, planning district one, sixty-three percent of the local residents work downtown. Half of the households don't own a car. How do they get to work? Those that don't take transit walk and bike. Okay. As you go north to the midtown, you'll notice the zero car households decline. The transit ridership declines a little bit, but that's remember that in, in both the first two, in the three, first three categories, there's a fair amount of walk to work because there are people who live and work in the same area. And back in nineteen seventy-four, when I was involved in the Metro Plan Exercise, the whole intention of North York City Centre was to create an area where people would rely on transit or walk to work. Next slide, please. Most Richmond Hill residents who use transit are traveling downtown. Downtown accounted for half of all peak period transit destinations in the GTA. It's only fifteen percent of the jobs, but half of the transit. Unfortunately, things have changed. COVID and the Zoom work at home revolution has decimated transit ridership and caused great difficulties for people that own and operate office buildings. The whole plan that we have to this point assumes there's going to be dramatic changes in travel behavior. These are the assumptions that allow it to work. Richmond Hill residents have high auto ownership. Only five percent of households don't own a car. Sixty-two percent of households own two or more cars. And this is because they're traveling to dispersed locations where transit is not and will not become an, an attractive option, unfortunately.
I don't mean to interject. You have five minutes up. If you could wrap up as quick as you can, I give you some allowance.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry that I took so long. The last slide, please. We have some history here. North York City Centre. North York City Centre was to be the area where people would use, wouldn't drive their cars, right? And yet the data that we have in our most recent report, figure seven point three, demonstrates that half of the peak demand in the Richmond Hill centre area and the North York city, centre area is auto driver traffic. In other words, in that situation, we haven't succeeded in reducing dramatically the auto ownership trends. I've got data going back thirty years. It hasn't happened in North York City Centre. It's much less likely to happen in the Richmond Hill Centre.
Mr. Crowley is already one minute and forty seconds over time. So if you can wrap up one sentence, if you don't mind.
The updated plan will not work in transportation terms.
Thank you.
Okay, the road network will be overloaded and this will have a huge impact on the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that final sentence. I appreciate that. And thank you for your input. We do have your written materials. Thank you very much. It's certainly not an item of no interest in the community. Next speaker, the delegate is Mr. John Lee. I don't see him in the chamber. Oh, yes, he's here virtually. Welcome, Mr. Lee. Then you are a dedicated register for this item, eleven point eight. So you have five minutes as the procedure is mentioned, as I indicated, that this is something that we apply as a procedure. And to the extent that you wish to proceed, please do.
Chair Chen, I want to confirm. I sent an email to the council last week to request a fifteen minutes slot, address the concerns of our resident group regarding this plan. Will my request be permit?
Okay, thank you. So if you are saying, Mr. Lee, then if I understand correctly, your interest is to go beyond the five minutes, which you have seen just now. Mr. Crowley, that's over five minutes. I, I, I give discretion up to a minute thirty seconds extra. However, I think you're asking for much more than that. And on that note, as a Chair, I'm respectful of the procedural rules and bylaw. And but on your request, I'd like to have the advice of the city clerk. So, Mr. Kirk, can you advise what's the procedural rules that we say on a request for a delegate to extend the five-minute speaking time within this question?
Thank you. To the Chair. The procedure by law is very clear, and it says that delegates are given five minutes to speak. Although, as you just did, and our precedent has always been to, you know, a little flexibility on the end to allow a delegate to wrap up. As I understand it, the delegate is seeking, I heard him say fifteen minutes to speak. Well, that's significantly beyond the procedural by law rule. Council's mechanism is to waive that rule on a two-thirds vote. So if council wants this delegate to speak for fifteen minutes or allow him up to fifteen minutes, that would actually take a motion to waive the procedure by law on it, and that requires a two-thirds vote to pass. And if I might, through the Chair, I certainly, as your governance advisor, would not advise doing so. I generally will never recommend that you waive your procedure by law. Procedure bylaws exist for very good reasons, and the rules are very important. They set the tone for everyone to understand how the meetings are to happen. And in fact, our very procedure by law says, one of the principles of this is that you each individually and staff and the public are entitled to an efficient meeting. And rules and speaking times and debate times enhance that efficiency. I would also comment that, of course, that five minutes actually is a long period of time, and it is not the only tool that the public or anyone has to, to bring to the attention of council. what they can do. Correspondence, we receive correspondence all the time. Where we have correspondence from residents and interested parties and their delegation. So, you know, it is obviously council's meeting, council's procedure bylaw, council's decision. But my advice is not to waive the procedure bylaw.
Thank you for the advice from the Mr. Clerk. As a chair, as I mentioned, I want to be respectful to the procedural rules and the settlement by law. But notwithstanding what I hear from the clerk, I do want to entertain, which is an option, to have the committee to consider a motion, if a member of the committee willing to move it, for the waif of these procedural rules. Now, am I hearing correctly, Mr. Clerk? For this particular motion, any member might wish to bring forward for waiving the procedural bylaw and speaking time needs two-thirds majority. Am I correct?
You are correct, Mr. Chair. A motion to waive the procedure bylaw always requires a two-thirds vote to pass. So at least six members of the nine.
It's not a simple majority, got you. So on that note, Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, please. I'm the chair. I'm running the meeting. As I mentioned, I'm willing, I'm prepared to anything in motion by the committee member to consider waiving to pursue bylaw. So let me ask any member of the committee, like to make a motion. Yeah, on this one, the subject is on waiving the procedural bylaw, which we all hear by, from the clerk.
Am I seeing anyone that can move the motion?
Okay, we do have a mover. Now, the, this is a committee, we only need one mover. So, subject to the advisor clerk, I guess it's pretty clear. I don't know whether it's, in fact, we need to have any discussion. The motion is being very clear. Is either yeah or nay in terms of waiving the procedural bylaw to allow this speaker for, or delegate for more than five minutes? Is that not correct, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. Through the chair, a motion to waive the rules is debatable. So council can debate the merits of waiving the rules or it can simply proceed to the vote. That's obviously your discussion.
Yes, of course. And I'm trying to be mindful of the times, eleven-thirty. And delegate been waiting for quite a while. So I'm open to any comments by committee members. And I do see one, Carol Davidson, under motion. Yes, Carol Davidson.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to reiterate that the bylaw for time is not personal. It doesn't move, the scale doesn't move depending on who's speaking. I think if we did allow it, it would set a dangerous precedent in that in the past, we have seen what happens when procedural bylaws are ignored. It opens up the door for all kinds of other behaviour. And if we allow it once, it'll be very difficult to tell the next person fifteen, twenty minutes is okay. I feel that it is an exercise in democracy to have the same rules for everyone, including us. We have five-minute talking limits and it provides stability to what this council does. It provides stability for staff and even us and residents to have rules that we stick to. And if we, if someone here on council would like to move a motion in the future to revisit the time that we allow people to speak, I'm all for that. But I completely agree with the clerk who says that I believe we are all open to other ways of communicating emails, meetings, discussions online and that the five-minute rule is sort of the end point of a discussion about an issue. And I won't be supporting this motion. It is not personal. It's about providing good governance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have Mayor West who should speak on this and then councillor Sylvis.
Thank you. Actually, I think the clerk said most of what I was going to say and probably said it better than I would have. You know, I think in the last term of council, you know, I was contacted by a number of people and, and I guess the indication is, is that, you know, we sometimes, they sometimes felt that we got off the road a little bit on either not respecting or always or sometimes waiving the procedure. And I, I think, you know, that's something that, you know, I've heard from the public that they do want a predictability and they do want us to be making sure that we're respecting all of the rules that we should be doing. I, I think five minutes is, is a good, a good time. We, we on council are restricted to five minutes typically. I also think that this is not the only way to submit information to us. And, you know, I, I don't believe that in this case it's, it's a good idea for us to be doing that. So I would not be supporting this at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor West. And next I have councillor Sylvis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
And thank you to our clerk, Mr. Heike, for your, your information. It's very, very important that everyone understands that what we are doing here is democratic. It's nothing other than that. We have a procedural bylaw in place and, and that procedural bylaw must be respected. There are many, many reasons for that. And Mr. Clerk was, was very vocal in stating exactly what, what the reasons for that is, are. I won't be supporting this because of that. And I, I agree with what Mayor West and councillor Davidson has, has said that it's, you, you're going on a slippery slope if you, if you're, if one or us are going to permit something like this. Should we have a constructive discussion in the future regarding amendments to our procedural bylaw? Absolutely. Well, I think there would be no one sitting on this council who would be opposed to that. But this is not the time. So I ask for the vote to be recorded, please. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair, I, I do want to say, I think most of the comments have been covered here. I thank our clerk, Stephen Heike, for bringing that information forward. I have had email conversations with the delegate indicating, you know, how I feel about this particular matter. And I agree with councillor Sylvis. This is what we're talking about when we're talking about democracy. And this is not the only tool that is available. And the fact that we've actually brought back the committee of the whole to give additional opportunities for the public to speak, again, just became another tool. And it also means that there's still another opportunity for another five minutes next week. So again, I know the, this is like, you know, Carol Davidson said, it's not a personal thing. This is, this is about what is proper procedure. I've been on enough committees to know that, that through my experience that this would be the appropriate way. So thank you for allowing me to make my comments.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Any other committee members want to comment? If not, before I call the vote, I also want to say my comment on the, Mr. Lee, as a delegate, as referred by councillor Thompson. He did write to council members and the mayor regarding this request in advance of this meeting. As I said a couple of times, as a chair, I'm respectful of the procedural bylaw. And Mr. Clerk said, well, it's there for the reason. And rather than making the change on the spot, so to speak, within this time, and as councillor Sylvis referred to, without further making the thoughtful, particular amendment to the whole procedural bylaw. If indeed in the future we may need to expand to, you know, from five minutes to additional time, that would be the opportunity. But kind of making the, setting the, waiving the procedural bylaw on the spot, so to speak, and without a proper assessment, what the ramifications would be. Because I remember committee members mentioned, I have to be saying that concern by the present setting. If not, if it had been done this time, why not the another person on her time on another important subject? So I hope, Mr. Lee, this is, as members already said, it's nothing personal. But I feel duty bound as a chair to be respectful with the fourth time I think I mentioned it, of the procedural rules. So I have to say that I would have to support the procedural bylaw. Thank you. And if no other committee members want to speak on this, Mr. Clerk, there has been called for, we call the vote. So floor is yours.
Thank you. Through the chair, voting on the motion of councillor Tree to waive the rules of procedure to provide the delegate fifteen minutes, a delegation time in this meeting. Councillor Sylvis.
No.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
No.
Thank you. Regional and local councillor DePaula.
No.
Thank you. Regional and local councillor Chan.
No.
Thank you. Councillor Davidson.
No.
Thank you. Mayor West.
No.
Thank you. Councillor Liu.
No.
Thank you. Councillor Tree.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Xu.
No.
Thank you. That motion fails to carry for lack of a two-thirds vote.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now I am turning on to the delegate, Mr. Lee. Of course, none of the time we have been talking about is factored into the five minutes, as you have seen. And I am prepared to exercise my discretion as chair within reasonable time beyond the five minutes. I just did it now for one minute and thirty seconds. So the floor is yours, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. Please display the slide three. We all know that the RHC plan was deeply affected by the provincial EMZO. The key change was the removal of jobs to increase populations to a world record level, turning a regional centre into a badminton community. With the job to resident ratio of less than twenty-three percent. This is on the EMZO part, which is lower than the typical balance of fifty percent. It means two resident job, one job, that's balance. The EMZO will generate about ninety-five hundred job deficit. Given this damage, we expect our city to take some measures to relieve this situation. However, we didn't realise the city's plan made it worse. The city's portion has only a job to residential ratio of thirteen percent, which even worse than EMZO ratio. This alone will create six thousand job deficit, which is really surprising. It saves our planning department. Do not really understand the tough situation we are facing. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. The truth is that Richmond Hill, no, not this one, go, go back. Slide B, yeah. The truth that Richmond Hill is a city for far short of employment opportunity. In twenty seventeen, we are least short of thirteen thousand jobs. That's why they have a name, Sleep Town. Next, please. In fact, a sleep town, the commercial and business do not play a big role as other communities. So the city's revenue and operational costs heavily rely on resident, residential property tax. Now Richmond Hill residents pay the highest property tax among all comparable cities. Moreover, our tax increase rate over the past decade is the highest among all municipalities, all comparable municipalities in Ontario. And these trends continue. Next. If we compare our net income in the past ten years, our residents have only increased twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the net income boost. But it is observed a third by the property tax hike. This is the highest among all municipalities in Ontario, no exception. So nobody even close to this ratio. That's the reality of the sleep town economy. Please go to, jump to slide thirteen. We all know this RHC is supposed to develop as another union station. It's used called Union North. However, in Union Station area, the residents only account for eight percent. In this picture, about a six hundred, six hundred thousand jobs nearby. Those high rise are for employment centres. They require much fewer resources. In contract, right now, Richmond Hill Centre was designed for only five residents, one job, which is only one point seven percent as union station. We, the city desperately need the economic boost, that's the hope for this RHC. But right now, instead, we got a trailer for hook up to our area and the side economy engine. So that's totally opposing to the truth, to the, to the fact we want. Go to number seventeen, please. What we are doing right now, the provincial and the city, is push this RHC to another Shengjing Town. Shengjing Town because it's unachievable high density, but even still lower than us because it's not legal. That's why it's why the pool's committee in Richmond, uh, in So now, but even though they have three subway lines and four subway stations within walking distance, this RHC, this RHC has no such convenience, but still proposed higher than the population of Shengjing Town. There is no reason we can do better than here.
Mr. Lee, I would like to let you know, you are twenty seconds over or more than that. But I, if you can wrap up as soon as you can.
Go to nineteen, please. Go to slide nineteen, please.
Nineteen, I think I heard.
Yeah. Okay. So we have no any, any other request. Just the planning team give us a few real examples to show as comparable density, compare infrastructure, it works. Can pick up the same example from all over the world. Back to slide eight, that's all, back to slide eight, please.
Okay.
If a city try to silence residents, that's bullshit. That's what we are doing right now for this council. Is a digital copy. Thank you.
Mr. Lee, thank you. And I was about to say that please respectful in terms of language, but thank you for finishing in this time that you have. And I appreciate that your input. And I'm sure it takes a quite a bit of time to put all those data together. And certainly something that we have on record. So next, I want to thank Mr. Lee for his dedication and effort behind it. Mr. Ian Andrews from Goodman's LLP. Mr. Andrews is online and like everybody else, we know we have five minutes. So the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor West, Deputy Mayor Chan and members of council. My name is Ian Andrews. I'm a lawyer with Goodman's and I'm here today on behalf of Metro View Developments Garden Limited, which owns the lands known as eighty-seven hundred and eighty-seven ten Young Street at the northwest corner of Young and Garden. I've also submitted a letter which elaborates on the points I'll be making today. Metro View's lands represent an important gateway location to both the Richmond Hill Centre and to the city's Young Street mixed-use corridor. As you likely know, Metro View has been pursuing development applications for its property for nearly five years. The plans have been through three iterations, three council public meetings. And you may recall that council recently voted to oppose the current proposal. And it is scheduled for a three-week Ontario Land Tribunal hearing, which will occur this September. Although we've attempted many times to engage the city in settlement discussions, so far we have been unable to find a resolution. Notwithstanding that the city had actively encouraged Metro View back in twenty nineteen to amend its initial proposal to pursue an iconic high-density mixed-use development at this location. We were hopeful that the updated Richmond Hill Centre secondary plan would provide an opportunity for council to reconsider the policy direction for its lands. And while there are many positive aspects of the proposed secondary plan that we commend staff and its consultants for preparing, unfortunately, the version before you for adoption falls short in two fundamental respects. With respect, the first one is that the maximum density contemplated for the west of Young character area is woefully inadequate and is completely out of touch with the provincial and regional policy framework and other approvals throughout. And it is completely out of touch with the provincial and regional policy framework and other approvals throughout the Young Street corridor. Secondly, the policies which speak to neighborhood transition and impact have been modified in the wrong direction since the twenty twenty-one version of the plan. They have become even more rigid in this draft, ignoring the concerns we previously expressed. A lot has changed in the landscape since city council considered the previous draft in October twenty twenty-one. Of course, there was a municipal election. We now have some new faces on council. And importantly, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing issued two significant approvals in twenty twenty-two. First, as you know, is the enhanced M Z O for the large transit oriented community directly across the street from Metro View's lands, taking up much of the, the space east of Young Street. And secondly, the minister approved a New York region official plan with population employment forecast out to twenty fifty-one and modifications to what the region had adopted, which removed the city's ability to impose height and density restrictions in priority intensification areas. It cannot be emphasized enough. This is a secondary plan for an urban growth center, which is one of only two such areas that will have subway access in the entire region. The other being the Vaughan Metropolitan Centre. It must therefore be planned to accommodate the highest and most dense housing and transit supportive high-rise development. This is clearly set out in the provincial policy statement, the growth plan, the proposed new provincial planning statement, and in the newly approved regional official plan. The Richmond Hill Center unmistakably occupies the top level of the city's urban structure and intensification hierarchy, and its boundaries include the properties on the west side of Young. The Richmond Hill Center must be optimized across its entire geographic limits. We acknowledge there's an existing low-rise neighborhood to the west, but that does not diminish the imperative to build new high-density housing. Built form transition is important, but intensification is an overarching objective. And although proposed policy ten point three point four point five introduces the concept of angular plane projections subject to criteria in consultation with staff, the policy is not flexible enough and it is undermined by the prerequisite that the proposal has to adhere to the maximum density set out on schedule two. Just because the majority of the area east of Young is subject to an E M Z O permitting lots of new tall buildings does not relieve the city from its obligation to optimize the remainder of this strategic growth area. However, what is important to note is that the numerous tall buildings proposed on the east side of Young, including forty-five story towers, two of them immediately across the street from Metro View at Young and Garden on the northeast corner, establishes a new benchmark by which the massing and urban design must be assessed. And in this context, Metro View site at the northwest corner, which forms an important gateway location as indicated in the draft secondary plan and which is less than a five-minute walk from the new intermodal subway station, must be planned for similar We believe that Metro View's proposal, which again is before the O L T, will provide balance, symmetry, and good urban design to frame the Young Street corridor. Will also embrace and implement the clear provincial policy direction. But unfortunately, by proposing to limit the density to three point zero F S I west of Young, the draft secondary plan attempts to undermine the development potential of this important site. The proposed density cap would actually raise a conformity issue with the approved regional official plan, which does not authorize the city to impose maximum densities. The city and tribunal have approved numerous official plan amendments within the past decade permitting densities greater than four and even five times on development sites running on the west side of Young with structural designations several rungs lower on the, on the intensification hierarchy. And in this context, given a large development site within an urban growth center and an identified gateway location within four hundred meters of the planned terminus of the subway, to restrict it to three times density is actually quite shocking. So we have two requests and I'll wrap up now. We're asking you to remove the maximum density, which was on schedule two, particularly the three point zero for west of Young. And we're seeking modifications to the policies on transition angular planes so that impacts can be properly assessed on a site specific basis without being handcuffed by the unreasonable and unfortunate density constraint. You happy to work with staff to address these issues in the coming weeks? And with any luck, this might even generate momentum toward resolving Metro View's existing appeals and avoiding a lengthy contested hearing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews, for your dedication. And this complete the list of dedication register. Now is the time I do want to bring it back to the committee because the other items have been all adopted except one. Yes, I, I know that. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Kirk. So I'd like to bring it back to the committee. So now's the time for committee members to speak about the, uh, this particular subject. And on that note, I have the first speaker, Councillor Civiles. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay.
With indulgence, Councillor Civiles, uh, Mr. Kirk had advised that, uh, I gather it go by the numbering system. Eleven point five is precedes eleven point eight.
Through the chair, just for the benefit of committee, and I know it's still relatively new. I, when council adopted the rule that we hear all delegations regardless of the agenda item at the first, so then we would now proceed always in numerical order based on the agenda items that are pulled. So.
Very good. Yes. Mr. Kirk is absolutely right. Uh, we used to deal with in a numbering order. Uh, and then we changed it dish term to the hearing all the delegates first, uh, because we don't want the delegates waiting. So thank you. And then, uh, Councillor Civiles will come, I will come to you when eleven point eight comes up. But to Councillor Davidson's pull out eleven point five preceding eleven point eight. So Councillor Davidson on the Indigenous Action Committee One E P I report. The floor is yours. Five minutes as we know.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, uh, suggest that while I agree, we should, uh, continue the pilot of waiving fees for indigenous groups that as far as the last two staff recommendations to ensure that all indigenous groups have equal opportunity to host events, it's recommended that multipurpose rooms, gymnasiums, that the fees be waived. And then the second part is that, um, if it's a city-led event or in conjunction or, or working with city that in-kind promotions and equipment rentals to indigenous groups be afforded. So my question is I would like to suggest that we ensure that the first part indigenous groups have equal opportunity to have, um, use of facilities without cost be specific to Richmond Hill-based indigenous groups. And then if other groups outside of Richmond Hill would like to do something in conjunction with a city event or even a, perhaps even a councillor-led event, that those, um, wave of fees would also apply to them if they're working in conjunction with something to do with Richmond Hill. I, I'm just concerned that if it's a wide open invitation to have fees waived, that we may not be necessarily helping our own local indigenous groups. If we put in the first part that the, um, fees will be waived for Richmond Hill-based indigenous groups. And then if an outside group that isn't based here wants to do something that involves the city and is a, is a coordinated community event, they would also receive those waived fees. I'm just not sure what a wide open invitation to waive fees would end up looking like. I'm, I don't know. Um, that is my suggestion. I, I look forward to hearing from other councillors on that.
Thank you, Councillor Davidson. So, uh, if I understand it correctly, uh, you have no issue with, uh, with Compendation A. By the way, uh, presumably you will put a motion forward, uh, with amendments. So, um, it sounds like you want to make amendments to B and C. You have any particular wordings that, um, you were suggesting? By moving your question.
My suggestion is that we do continue waiving fees for any booking for a Richmond Hill-based group that includes parks, multipurpose room, gymnasium bookings, that those fees are waived for a Richmond Hill-based group. And that fees will also be waived for any other group that is not Richmond Hill-based if they are looking to work with the city and host a community event or do something else within Richmond Hill. My question is, is that, is that doable, possible that? I just want to make sure we are giving opportunities to our local group.
And okay, thank you. Uh, uh, perhaps Commissioner Steele can, uh, respond to that and, 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 and perhaps for your consideration, Councillor Davidson. Thank you for raising the issue and question. Uh, in addition to making amendment at this point in time in the committee, uh, other options you could consider just for your consideration can, uh, refer this to staff, uh, to come back. Would be if the timing, uh, work for council meeting, which is next week or, uh, referral and allowance deferral. Um, so, um, that's for your consideration. Uh, in the meantime, um, if the staff commissioners still have anything to respond to, uh, I'm open to hearing that. I'm sure committee members, including Councillor Davidson would be interested in hearing, if any. Not meant to put you on the spot, but you are the best person to answer that, Commissioner Steele.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so one, one point I would make is, um, I, I wonder how we evaluate what is Richmond Hill-based. Does that, are, are you referring to the residents of the directors of the nonprofit group? Like, is that how you would evaluate that?
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I would appreciate if we could revisit this. So you can define that for me. I, I have to be honest. I know of a couple of groups, but I'm just concerned there is a cost associated with this, which, which we are happy to forego. But I also think that the taxpayers of Richmond Hill want to support the local groups first and then involve others. Um, I, I would leave that to you to define. I honestly don't know. And I know it's I'm just asking, should it be more defined? So if staff would like to consider that and come back next week, if that's enough time, I would fully support that. Let this go back to staff.
Thank you. Um, I, 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 I would, uh, would be remiss if I'm not giving the opportunity of a city manager to, uh, uh, say a few things if she wants to or something more to add. City manager.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, I, I, I I don't think I want to make any comments without consulting with the Commissioner of Community Services, who has put a recommendation in front of council today based on all the consultations that she has undertaken uh, at this point. Uh, if I'm understanding Councillor Davidson correctly, she's looking just for us to be more specific that this is for the Richmond Hill-based organizations. And that perhaps any consideration for groups that are non-Richmond Hill-based or for activities that are inclusive of Richmond Hill, but perhaps broader that, um, you know, we treat those on a case-by-case basis, uh, depending on what their request is. So, uh, perhaps, uh, I mean, we're at the disposal of council, uh, for what it is that you want us to do, but.
Thank you for your comments, uh, City Manager. So, uh, Councillor Davidson, uh, I'm looking for a motion. Uh, uh, I, I, I'm not clear that you, at this point in time, uh, you are making a motion, obviously not for A B C as recommended. Uh, however, as I, uh, suggest for your consideration, it could be a referral motion or deferal motion. The choice is yours, but I need a motion on the floor before I proceed to the next speaker who want to speak on this subject.
Well, now I'm all confused about defer refer, but I would like it to go back to staff just to explore the idea that it is more particular in the wording. But I refer, I'm going to refer. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so Councillor Davidson has moved for a referral motion. Um, do you have particular date in mind? Uh, coming back next council or coming back another time? Yes, Mr. Kirk, you have some, uh, advice in here?
Thank you. If I might suggest to the council that the motion simply say that it be referred back to staff for consideration of the matters raised in committee hold or report back at a future committee, the whole or council meeting. The reason being, so technically a motion to refer from this meeting still requires passage at council next week. Uh, it's just a procedural thing that we do need to fix as part of the discussion. So that wouldn't preclude staff from providing additional information next week, uh, to readdress. But if they're not able to do, then they'd come back at a future.
Councillor Davidson, would that be acceptable to you?
Yes, accepted.
Thank you. And Mr. Kirk, do you mind to put on the screen or maybe recite it again before members committee vote on it?
Uh, thank you. I, I'm happy to put it on the screen. It's going to take me a minute to type it, but if committee just indulge me, I would just simply say that a staff report, S R C S dot two three dot zero three be referred uh, back to staff for consideration of the comments raised regarding, uh, Richmond Hill indigenous groups for a further report back at a future committee, the whole or council meeting.
Is that reflecting your wish, Councillor Davidson? All committee members, um, have, uh, understanding of what we are voting for, all those in favor. Oh, um, I guess as a procedure would say that where there's opportunity for members to comment. So on that note, I do have Mayor West, uh, first and then Councillor Civiles.
Uh, thank you. So I, I'm, I'm always happy to get more information and, and you know, the nice thing about committee, the whole is that, you know, this is a place for discussion. We're going to move it on to council. So I, I'm, I don't have a problem with what we're proposing here, but I just wanted to reiterate. I, I do know that, uh, Commissioner Steele and has put in quite a lot of consultation, research and thought into the recommendation. And I, I know I've talked to her a couple of times in the last little while and gone back and forth with a, a number of different aspects of this so that we can do our very best to get this, uh, right. When I say we, I mean mostly, Mr. Steele and a little bit me. Um, but, um, I think it's important to get it right. And if, if the committee feels that we need to get an answer to that question, and this is the mechanism that we want to get that answer, I'm fine with that. My understanding though is that I think we're in a good place, uh, with the proposal that's we have in front of us in the staff report. But, you know, I, we're just getting more information and, and I, I can't imagine Commissioner Steele correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, this probably can come back to council on Wednesday, right? Like this coming Wednesday?
Commissioner?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I, I don't think so because the deadline to get something on the agenda is basically tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mr. Kirk?
Yeah, I apologize, uh, uh, for, uh, for the benefit of the commissioner, since once again we're new to committee the whole again. Certainly, uh, it would be open and it's always open to the city manager to allow us to put things on a council agenda closer to, uh, the date of the meeting, including after the original agenda is published. Uh, and this would be one of the normal cases where if possible, uh, you could include the additional information link.
After the commission.
Okay. I'm just not sure it's possible. All right. And that, and, and, and that's fine. I mean, it's not, it's not an emergency. So, um, but I, I it's my understanding. I think we've really gone down this, uh, thought process road a little bit. And I, I suspect we know where the road goes to, but, um, anyway, that's fine. I just wanted to make those comments. Um, you know, it's like so many things we do around here, you know, nothing is a straight line and, you know, nothing's one extreme or the other. It's always somewhere in between. So, um, but I, I think, uh, I'm, I'm pretty confident that this is a good, a, a good recommendation that's in the staff report, but getting answers, um, you know, nobody is allergic to getting more information. So I think, I think we could take that route as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor West. Uh, next is Councillor Civiles. You want to speak on this motion now we have in front of us and on the screen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I, I certainly understand, uh, Councillor Davidson's, uh, request for, uh, more definitive information. And, um, uh, I, I agree. It's, none of us would ever object to that. Um, however, I, I do believe that, um, there's, there's a couple of issues here that I, I would just like to say. Number one, the actual boundary, the municipal boundary of Richmond Hill is not really an identification of indigenous people. So we have to be very careful with that. And it might be better and with all respect to the commissioner and the city manager, if we, if we look at York region as a whole, is that, that expands the area of, of where, um, indigenous, uh, people may be residing as opposed to it being in Richmond Hill itself. Because the Richmond Hill municipal boundary, um, it doesn't really, um, doesn't really factor into this, um, be, because of, of, uh, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, because of its inherent discussion about whether, whether or not indigenous individuals actually live within the boundaries of Richmond Hill. I hope I'm making myself, myself clear. So um, that's, I, I believe that's one, one of the cautions that I would, I would hope we'd be able to, uh, come back with. And secondly, um, extensive consultation has been had here with, um, with stakeholders and the groups. And, um, while I appreciate that Commissioner Steele could bring it back in a week, it might also be necessary because this is something that's being inserted, that we have to go back to those stakeholders for further discussion. So I, I just wanted to put that in there and I, I would understand if that would be, um, that would be a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Civiles, for that insightful, uh, comments for all of us to consider. So, Councillor Thompson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, I do have to echo the comments that, uh, Councillor Sullivan's has put together. I was thinking the exact same thing. The other thing that I was also looking at was the, uh, attachment that came with the report. And I was looking through the various events that, uh, that occurred and, you know, I, I don't see anything. that uh, would be amiss with the report that was put together by staff. Um, and because we're really only looking at an extension of the pilot program, I'm thinking that uh, you know, what you're offering uh, is perhaps overkill. I believe that Commissioner is correct that. Or maybe it was the uh, city manager that this is all taken on a case by case basis. So I was quite comfortable with the report as is.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Um, uh, Mayor West indicated he wants to speak second, and we'll come back to the mover, Counselor Davidson in the end. That's okay.
Okay, um, so I realize that this is not part of the motion. I I don't disagree with what Counselor Silivitz said, but I think we need to be careful about putting York region boundaries on it too, because I mean, a lot of the uh, the the folks who are stakeholders in our territory under our treaty territory or don't live in York region either. So um, anyway, I'll let, I I would suggest if we, if we're gonna allow it or we're gonna ask for an examination of this, we allow um, Commissioner Steele, who I'm sure has got a good handle on this to uh, to to bring it forward. But I I just want to reiterate, I I really do think at the end of the day that we have a good plan, but it's, you know, there's no harm in in getting a bit more information here and you know, we need to be comfortable and that's one of the reasons for bringing committee the whole back is it gives us an additional opportunity to give this some thought and this is what we're doing here. And I, you know, I think that's great. So.
Thank you, Mayor West. City managers, uh, is coming.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, perhaps just to clarify for members of council, uh, the group that we piloted with and the two groups that we're currently working with and have been consulting with throughout this entire process, um, are implementing programs um, that are not restricted to Richmond Hill residents already. So they do have representation from other communities. This is as it relates to the user fee policies within Richmond Hill, and should they choose to be running their events and activities in Richmond Hill, regardless of who they are. So uh, when you look at a lot of the indigenous groups that are out there organizing events, activities and programs, um, none of them are exclusive to municipal boundaries. So we have, this report already does that for us. And it already indicates that we would work with any indigenous group that came forward to us uh, to use Richmond Hill facilities. And the only stipulation would be that Richmond Hill residents are provided the opportunity to attend and participate. I hope that helps a little bit with the current report and recommendation.
Thank you for very much uh, in for the input. Uh, so as the move for the motion, Counselor Davidson, you have the last word.
I do thank you um, through you, Mr. Chair. I thank uh, staff, other members of council. I'm here to learn. I I was thinking in a way that clearly isn't conducive to the breadth of this uh, of this idea, and I would like to withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Davidson, um, the motion has been removed. So uh, we, I do need and a member of the committee to move the motion that were commanded by staff, A B C, Counselor Civiles. Are you moving the motion? Yes. Okay. Um, any discussion on the motion is a different motion now. Yes, Regional Counselor DePaula.
I was gonna second it, but you don't.
We don't need a second at this time, right? Okay, there's no more discussion. I call the vote. All those in favor of the motion. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Record the vote. The public record, record the vote.
Record of voice requested, Mr. Kirk.
Thank you through the chair voting on the motion moved by Counselor Silivitz to adopt the staff recommendation regarding the Indigenous Action Committee One Year Pilot Project, Counselor Silivitz.
Yes, well, thanks to staff for all their hard work.
Thank you, Counselor Davidson.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you, regional local Counselor DePaula.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor West.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Tree.
Yes, you there.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Shu.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Liu.
Yes.
Thank you, regional local Counselor Chan.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for the committee. Uh, and I think we only have one particular agenda item rather than the very final ones later on. Um, so now is the opportunity to have a committee um, to specifically uh, work on or discuss on item number eleven point eight. Um, that three delegates spoke about on the Richmond Hill Centre Secondary Plan. So I bring it the item here and um, and is that particular member who should move the motion as recommended by staff? Yes, Counselor Civiles.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, just apologize, Mr. Chair. I just, and I sincerely apologize. Uh, the uh, the staff recommendation, I I'd actually suggest to the mover that uh, clause B should be worded differently. Uh, and if you would permit me um, for your consideration, obviously, if you want to make this this uh, motion, uh, I'm gonna put it on the screen, the alternate uh, what I'm suggesting actually should be. And this is staff's recommendation, just clarifying what was actually in the staff report. So if you look uh, in clause B, um, this actually i- if uh, clause B is that council adopt, so obviously uh, everything that arises at committee, the whole does go forward to council. So if council, if committee was to adopt this recommendation, it would, that would be the recommendation on the council agenda. So that's our recommendation.
Yes, as the mover, I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk, for the just in time uh, suggestion. Uh, so Counselor Civiles, so what um, a advice is from Mr. Kirk is looking at not um, the B as in the page one of the staff report, but rather on the screen. So, Mr. Kirk, would you please um, show it on the screen so that the mover, Counselor Civiles is comfortable with moving that forward?
I think you have the wording.
If we could just bring this wording back.
So Counselor Civiles, is something you'll be moving?
Yes, I I I I approve that. Um, if I may, just a, just a couple of things I wish to say. Uh, first of all, again, our thanks to staff. This has been a very long road. And to Ms. McGrath, who I can see behind the podium there, and 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 all of your staff, or everybody who has been involved in this, uh, we are, we're really, we're coming to an inflection point here that I think is extremely important to the city and to her residents. Uh, there's still much discussion that has to be had here. Um, this is, this is a plan that is telescoped far into the future. And we don't know what will change far into the future, which could amend or revise this particular um, amendment. And it gets a little bit complicated from there, but um, it it's, there's, there's always a discussion that can be had. There's a secondary plan, like an official plan. It can always be a just a further discussion. So um, I I, the one thing I would just like to add is um, I I want to thank um, the the delegates for for coming forward. Um, I greatly appreciate um, that discussion. Um, uh, it's very erudite and thank you, Mr. Crowley, for for being present here in council chambers. Um, when one is quoting data, I think one must be careful uh, to ensure that that data is correct. So um, I I I would like to, you know, I I would like to urge Mr. Lee um, in the future, if if specific data is being put forward, it's all, I would suggest that it's best to bring it forward to staff so that they can investigate everything that is being stated. Um, so for the public record, um, it's possible for us to know whether that data is actually correct or not, or if it applies appropriately to this, to this, to the municipality or to this particular secondary plan. Other thing I want to say is in response to um, regional local councillor DePaulo about the Heritage Woodlot. So um, it's my understanding that that little woodlot is an identified heritage asset of Richmond Hill. That uh, that woodlot came came about um, because the Richmond Hill naturalists had incredible advocacy at the time to attempt to secure just that one little section with mature trees to protect and save those trees. And um, I I fully, I fully support that. It was originally therefore given to the city as a, as as far as my, I my understanding goes, um, as as Parkland dedication by by the developer who at the time was Metris, and they are now known as DG Group. Um, so thank them incredibly for for giving us that that small heritage wo- woodlot, and it serves it serves a huge purpose. And um, I would hope that um, that any, any developer who wishes to remove that woodlot and perhaps see something be developed on that small corner, be very much aware with all respect that this is an identified heritage asset of the city. And should that occur, it's going to, it should, it's going to have to come to Heritage Richmond Hill, of which I'm the chair. And we have to have a fulsome discussion regarding it's it's the, it's um, it's being a heritage asset identified. So so there's this, that, that side to it. And I know on with Bill twenty-three, there's still a lot up in the air with regards to heritage. So there's still a lot more that has to come, that has to come from from the province. But um, a- again, I thank you, uh, Regional Councillor DePaulo for bringing that forward because it is, we have discussed it before, very, very lightly, but I believe it deserves even even greater discussion. And um, that little heritage woodlot is identified actually in its in its um, the posting, the little sign on the corner there, it says Heritage Woodlot. And there's a reason for that because that's what it is. And um, I would personally chain myself to those trees to make sure that they survive. Thank you.
Um, I think we hear it first here at the committee. It's nothing in the motion. Um, any other members? Yes, Mayor West wants to speak, uh, as the next speaker on the motion in front of us, and then regional local council, DePaula. Mayor West.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I I just want to start off by saying, you know, I agree with a lot of the general principles that both of the delegates have brought forward today. And to be clear, and maybe a little bit of history, um, this pro- project uh, for the Richmond Centre Secondary Plan has been in the works for quite a long time, but the this whole thing changed significantly when the E M Z O was put forward about a year ago. Um, and just to be clear, I mean, we heart fought hard and we need to continue to fight hard about some of the bigger pieces of the puzzle um, that, you know, we're talking about here today and and, you know, the height and the density, the ratio of jobs to residential, and I'm going to talk about affordable housing in a minute, but um, those those battles, um, we made it very clear to the provincial government and, you know, we made it clear through a a a motion that we had at council. It was the first motion that we had after I was elected as as mayor. And council made their wishes very clear. We've, I know staff and I and and a number of others have advocated to the provincial government about those things. And, you know, we didn't get all we wanted. We, you know, there were some victories along the way that were minor things, but those big things are are not there. But what I will say in fairness, and and this has been said a couple of times in the presentations, is that there is provision in this plan to continue to work on some of those big things. You know, as was said, you know, in the, in the, the policy, there's a maximum residential and a minimum employment, which leaves the door open and we're gonna have to work for it. Um, but you know, there's, that leaves the door open for us to make that aspect of the of the plan better. Um, the affordable housing thing, I continue to be very disappointed in. I mean, there's absolutely no reason why a project this size can't have automatic uh, affordable housing that's more affordable for more people um, built into it. And I will continue to advocate for that. I'm telling you this right now. This is really important for us. If we're going to be building density in a place like that, we really need to have um, a provision for that. Now, again, that's in fairness, that's not something that's out of the question. We just need to be working hard and I will continue to work hard with these, all the stakeholders to, you know, to make sure that that happens. Um, this is not a perfect plan, but I do think that the policy that we've written allows us to form the basis to make it better over time. And I think that that's the part that that I'm more comfortable with, and I applaud the way that this has been written because I think it leaves the uh, door open for that. It has been said, and I think this is important, that, you know, this is not going to be built up tomorrow. It'll probably be decades and decades and decades in the future. And that's not an excuse for us not to work hard to make sure that it's the best that can be, but the polish, policy regime and the situation in cities and towns across the world, I presume, are going to change a lot in the coming decades. So, you know, I I want to give, you know, I I am looking at this through the lens of being, you know, the representative of the city and knowing that while the plan is not perfect, like many plans aren't perfect, um, we do have the opportunity to make it better, and I I think we will do that. Um, I guess the only thing I would say, uh, uh, to to to, okay, the only other thing I would say is that there is some excitement in this uh, plan. I mean, it does uh, give us the opportunity to build things that we don't have now in all in one coordinated way. Um, you know, shops, services, office buildings, residential buildings, hopefully that are affordable to a greater range of people, all can be built uh, in that area. And I think that is exciting. I mean, the the we're building, as Mayor Barrow used to say, we're building a city within a town, and that's not an easy thing to do. Um, and it it does require a little bit of surgery and it, you know, there's gonna be some bumps along the way, but I really do think that in the end, um, I do have faith that this can be made better. And I know that that some of the numbers that were presented today, I'm not sure I agree with all of those numbers and how they're being um, just demonstrated. Um, you know, we don't, we, the 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 numbers of that anybody is going to be putting forward today are going to just be models, and people don't live in models. They built, they live in real homes. So um, the only thing I, sorry, just one other thing, I'm running out of time here, but the only other thing I would say too is that um, I do agree one hundred and ten percent to that we need to be working hard to make sure that we're increasing the number of jobs in that area. Um, and perhaps at the at the expense of decreasing the number of residential units, because frankly, I think we have more than enough of those. Um, and I think that there is a dialogue to be had with the stakeholders um, on that. But anyway, I do support this. I do thank the staff for for uh, coming up with this plan. It's, it was a good plan. Um, and it is going to require a lot of work on all of our elected officials' part uh, to make the plan better. But I mean, I'm up for it. I'm assuming everybody else is, and I think we can, we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor West. And next I have Regional Council, DePaula.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I I too am very excited about supporting this motion. Uh, what we're doing is we're recommending to council in Official Plan Amendment forty-one, um, the the most significant O P amendment that the city's ever um, in its history adopted and I sent, what will, what will be the largest construction project in Canada? The the numbers that were stated by one of the delegates, um, you can't compare cities and their overall densities to to an intersection, um, to to a very small downtown area. This downtown areas can be very similar in density to other downtown areas. The the difference is it's it's going to be built all at the same time. And um, what I like about the Richmond Centre Secondary Plan is it incorporates um, all the opportunities that are available to um, to plan this, this city from from day one. Uh, cities usually evolve where they just keep uh, putting buildings on top of buildings. But uh, we are, we have an opportunity to um, through this secondary plan, uh, allow for for all the public spaces to be coordinated. Um, we have a, we have a public art policy with with and and other policies that that through the use of of those policies, we're um, we we as a council can create fantastic sis- uh, centres and squares, uh, civic squares. Um, we we have, right in the middle of this Richmond secondary plan on either side of of what uh, would be high tech and right next, or right above a subway station is a a city square that's about four times as large as Dundas Square. And we 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 can program it accordingly. Uh, if this were ready today, this is where we would celebrate, Mr. Mayor, for the least winning the Stanley Cup. We we could, we could have thousands of people gathering uh, there. This is an exciting city that that's all being approved uh, in in one fell swoop and and planned. And obviously, it's going to take you know, ten to twenty years to build out, but in the next, in the next ten to twenty years, there's nothing on the books anywhere else in Canada that that's a bigger project that that's about, that's about to be built. And uh, one of the top, if not the biggest, like right across North America. So we're really, it's really exciting for Richmond Hill. Um, it's very significant. It's It's future, future looking, game changing. And, you know, as we go along, I'm really looking forward to continuing to consult our residents and continuing to work together with, with the, the community to make sure that this, this centre develops as, as, as we all intend and, and that those new residents have all the amenities that they require, but that people from across the GTA can, can come and go from this area and it'd be a real destination, a centerpiece of the GTA. It's, it's on the intersection of the two most important arteries in the region, Young and Highway Seven and, and two, two of the most important arteries, transportation arteries and public transit arteries in, in the GTA. So just, just something that, that Richmond Hill should be extremely proud of and, and a result of a lot of work. Been over four years since we first had a public meeting on, on the secondary plan and it was proposed and, you know, here we are making recommendation to council for adoption. So we, we've come a long way. I think we had a very good consultative and inclusive process that's got us here. And, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to voting to support this at council next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Regional Councillor DePaulo. Any other speaker? For the first round? Okay, I have indication of second round. So for the first round, if I may also wish to add my thoughts and comments. As a former local councillor there for 16 years, I, as I mentioned earlier, I'm extremely, extremely excited because not only there's an opportunity for Richmond Hill to really rebrand itself, we are progressive, vibrant, dynamic city where the future subway is, where the future jobs may be and people with businesses in, anywhere along the Young Corridor, south of Highway Seven are welcome to move up here and help up to boost the job figures. I understand, Mr. Crowley, you have the destination. So we have the headquarters in here, like some of the companies move up initially when your North York City Centre was open, there were actually some movement. So I'm looking forward to it. And the staff, I want to thank you and the consultant, because as I mentioned, I was there four years ago when we had the first public consultation. I know how much hard work had been put in there. This will ruts, of course, a consultation never ends. And I hope that members of public and also members of committee also note that it's an ongoing process. In the interim, there's a number of things beyond the city's expectation and control, even though you might have the best consultant in the city, but there are certain things like enhanced MZO, it just like pops up just like that. So those would change some of the proposed modeling or numbers, estimates, both in jobs and, and residents numbers, but certainly we can work on it. And I think this particular secondary plan, that is something that does set out that policy that helped to guide the future development, if I may say, in a very constructive term. I'm particularly impressed, like I expressed yesterday in the official plan, committee as well, more active at gray activities, whether in this urban square, cafe people can walk to, now you have the subway coming up, people, commuters are not necessarily yet to live in Richmond Hill yet, have the enjoy amenities in the area, as well as I truly see that is a real potential for partnership in this Richmond Hill Centre. If we do it right with the six character area, that it would be a potential opportunity to, with future kind of institution. And I, I'm biased, I still honestly believe that a particular university would be best based in this area because then you have access to Richmond Hill, Maccom and Vaughan and further up north as well. I'm particularly impressed with the potential to build a district energy system. And I can see that could be like what the city lab was proposed back in Harbourfront in the city of Toronto with the people from Google, potentially we can have a really, I would say, really good system to doing conservation of water in terms of generating district energy, potentially it could be even leading to, quote unquote, spin-off cooperation that in the future, maybe 15 years from now, generate Rafine Hill for the city, not just for this RSC. So I'll see lots of potential. I'm extremely excited, so I don't need to say many more times, but it's an opportunity to Richmond Hill to show leadership in forging those partnership opportunities. Because now we have a proud city downtown with the infrastructure. So on that note, I'm happy to support the motion and vote on it for adoption next Wednesday. And for all the delegates, I want to thank you. As I've said many times, it's not the only opportunity to speak, you will be have more than five minutes, including today, for at least two opportunities to speak on this matter. So I'm, in this case, within the five minutes, I'd like to leave it here. Only thing I would say, it just comes to me when I wrote an article back in June 26, 17 or 16, oh, sorry, 2007, actually, I, I use the term Union Station of the North. I look forward to it one day, it will truly be the Union Station of the North. Thank you. And now on the second round, I have Council Civiles, maybe I'll come to you in the end after, the, the, Councillor, Mayor West, we speak on it. Mayor West, second round.
Okay, thank you. I just very quickly, I forgot to say one thing that I think is important. We've had a good conversation here today. One of the things also that the MZO, sorry, with the secondary plan does is fills in policy gaps where the MZO is silent. And I think that's something that we can't forget. One of, and I'll just use an example, well, probably two examples. One of the example is the west side of Young Street. The MZO policies and so on don't cover that. The secondary plan policies do. And the, the MZO policies don't cover the issue around Eleanor Circle, but the secondary plan does. And I think those two areas need to be protected, notwithstanding what the delegate from the, the development proponents said, I, I respectfully disagree. I mean, I think those areas need to be very carefully made and, and developed because the density in that area is budding up right against a very established neighborhood and I'm, I, you know, we need to be careful with that. So while this plan does a lot of other good things and, and, you know, and so on, but one of the other things too is it does play a protective role in some of the other parts. And the only other thing I would, I would want to say is that in this area, and I pointed this out, I guess, kind of maybe through my question that I asked earlier in this, most of the land that is around the MZO area, but within the secondary plan area is spoken for. I mean, okay, it has some opportunities potentially over many, many years to redevelop, but like the Langstaff Community Centre and the two schools that are there, that's not going to, going to redevelop anytime soon. And so a lot of those lands are not frozen over an infinite amount of time, but they're frozen over the long, the shorter periods because they're already fairly new development. And, you know, there's a bunch of, of high-rise development that's going on just north of the MZO area and it was only built a few years ago. So a lot of that has kind of crystallized and, you know, and, and like the Hydro Corridor and the, and the Stormwater Pond, that is not going to be developed. But anyway, I think that's another reason and I'm sorry that's a small item, but I think it's an important item and I neglected to say that in my first round. So thank you very much.
Every item is important, Mr. Mayor. On that note, any other items or comments from any other committee members? Yes, Councilor Schu, please.
Thanks, Chair. As a local councillor in this area, I'm so excited too, but I have one concern in, in reference to the development of TOC within this MZO boundary, is expected that more than 30 high-rise condominiums will be built, with the tallest one, more than 18 stories. So, but I can't see any specific plan on this secondary plan to address the sharp increase in population size that will result from this development. So I would suggest that in the staff, in the coming report, the next steps, do it, can you make any address or put more effort on how to tackle the problem of the sharp increase in population size for that TOC development specifically?
Thank you. Is that a question you want staff to respond to? Director Iro, I saw that you want, you want to respond to that? Because I did see in the presentation, it did talk about some modification of the street network. I think I saw that. But Director Iro, maybe you have more to respond to, Councilor Schu question?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. It, it's a fair question and I think it goes back to the process that, that we initiated post EMZO process or post EMZO approval. And so the, the timing, the time that we've taken in between the approval of the EMZO and the advancement of the secondary plan today has really been an exercise around having our consultants reevaluate our planning assumptions, our transportation assumptions and our engineering assumptions to ensure that this new proposed density is contemplated and captured in the secondary plan base analysis. And so that evaluation has been completed and, and those studies have been, have been published and translated in the secondary plan policies in order to ensure that the EMZO densities are accounted for. And so the work that you're describing is actually what delayed us a little bit in terms of bringing this, this report forward to council and, and has been captured in our analysis.
Thank you, Director. Councilor Schu.
That's all about.
Thank you. So if there are no other committee members which provide further comment, I come back to the mover, the motion, Councilor Civiles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to my council colleagues for, for their, their comments here. Mayor West, you, you are spotlighting exactly what I wanted to highlight as well. I would be remiss, as the Ward Five Councillor, not to make mention of the west side of Young, the character area. I want to thank staff and I want to thank our consultants for ensuring that that is a, that is a defined line, because it is. I, with all respect to Mr. Andres, I understand what he is saying from his perspective. However, I, I do believe that the perspective we need to look at is that the west side of Young is not connected to the east side, other than with the road. And on the west side of Young, we have a very established neighborhood known as South Richfield. And that neighborhood must be protected. So, so the line that defines the west, west of Young character area is very, very important. It should not become gray ever. And when discussing, when discussing Eleanor Circle, I, I had a number of calls and contacts from residents who live on Eleanor Circle, which I expected. And we've had good discussions about it. And I'd just like to say again, what I've said in, in, in private conversation, but for the public record, and it's stated very, very clearly by Ms. McGrath in, in her presentation to us, that this is a should or a maybe, perhaps this will happen. The city is not in the business of expropriating anybody's land. It's not what we do. So if there is a, somewhere down the line, very far down the line, there is a developer who wants to amalgamate that land as is defined in the, in the presentation, then that, we are specifically saying herein, that is what has to happen. So, and again, it has to be all of that land. It's not just going to be, someone's going to come in there and, and, and take your, and take your house. It's not going to happen. So I want to assure everybody who lives on Eleanor Circle of, of that. And if you have any further questions or concerns about that, please don't hesitate to contact my office. I'll gladly further the discussion with you. But Eleanor Circle is protected and the west side of Young is protected, and that is because we are bringing in a secondary plan here, which I fully support, which extends the boundaries of what is prescribed for the EMZO. And that's what we must do as a city. That's our due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On that note, I'd like to call the vote on this motion in front of us of, of having this particular item, which will center secondary plan, OP Amendment 41 going to council next week. All those in favor? I'm proudly.
Sorry, Mr. Clerk, is that unanimous?
I was about to say that. I was about to say, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the intervention, but I was about to say, I proudly say this is passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we can say that three times and no other business, nor there any emergency time sensitive matters and close session, I need a member of committee who will bow enough to move for adjournment. Mayor West, rise to your task. All those in, any discussion, if not, all those in favor of adjourning the committee of the whole meeting? Thank you very much. It's passed unanimously, Mr. Kirk, for the record. Thank you all for coming and thank you all the delegates in person, online. I think we reached my